Well, we appreciate everybody being here for City Council February 7th. I'll let the city secretary get back to her spot. At this time, we're going to open up our regular meeting. We're here in our City Council chamber located at City Hall. Appreciate all the attendance. It's nice to see people out and about. At this time, we'll kick off the meeting with an invocation being led by Pastor Mary Carden. She's with the Brazes Covenant Ministries. And PS, we are not taking any more open mic requests at this time. Please rise for the invocation, Mary, at the podium, please.
Father, we thank you that we know that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. We want to begin to thank you that Texas is largely out of drought. And Father, that you love our city and its history. And Father, I just say, over this meeting, the Lord bless and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you. And be gracious to us. Father, lift up your face with favor over us and give us peace. And we just ask this in the name of Jesus, who is our Prince of Peace. Amen.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. As tonight is an open mic night, as I stated before, please consider that the council can listen to whatever you have to say. You're going to have three minutes to speak. I'll call you up to the podium. Please do not grandstand. Point all of your comments towards the council. And we'll get this thing started. Scott, are you ready with the clock? We'll put a little timer up for you. And the first person I'm going to call up to the podium is Scott Young. Please state your name and your address, and we'll start the timer. You have three minutes.
My name is Scott Young, 101 West Pearl. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Council. I am the President of the Historic Granberry Merchants Association, one of the donor organizations of the Friends of the Opera House. I'd like to give you an example of philanthropy, economic development, and civic pride of which I recently have become aware. In 1998, the city of Dallas determined the need for five new bridges to cross the Trinity River, connecting downtown Dallas and North Oak Cliff, a blighted area not very inviting to developers or to revitalization. The city could have planned five wide concrete expanses which would deliver traffic from one side of the river to the other. Instead, forward-thinking city staff and civic leaders decided to turn this transit necessity into an asset. The city sought out and received a private sector donation of 15 million to change the concept from large concrete expansions to sculptural statement bridges designed by a world-class architect and engineer. Was an artistic sculptural bridge necessary to move traffic? Of course not. But a forward-thinking city is now much more moving than just traffic. They have created an economic engine as well as finding a solution to traffic problems. The first of these bridges is completed, and the Margaret Hunt Hill Calatrava Bridge will open in March. While the bridge was being built, there's been an explosion of construction, redevelopment, and improvements on the Oak Cliff side of the bridge. This is truly a story of build it and they will come, and they have come. Dallas and many Texas cities have the vision to see beyond the what is and see the possibilities that could be. We live in a city blessed with generous and giving people. We have an opportunity to become the regional destination theater of North Texas and probably beyond. An outstanding facility in any venue is the dream of most cities, especially cities our size. Citizens of Granberry have banded together to continue the Opera House dream that was the initial economic boost that attracted many investors and businesses. A gift of the magnitude of the Friends of the Opera House is very rare indeed in a community of our size. Cooperation between public and private sectors is what we all say is needed, and here it is, a chance to create an incredible multi-use venue. Gentlemen, this is a no-brainer. Please accept this generous gift.
Thank you, sir. I have somebody who put on here that they live at 106 North Crockett. I don't have a name, but you're up. If you don't respond to your address, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Heather Cleveland. I've owned and operated the Panhandle at 106 North Crockett for 18 years. I was asked to speak tonight on the perspective of the merchants and what the Opera House means to those of us who do business on the square. Nobody comes to Granberry for just one thing. They come for an experience, a package, and the Opera House is very much a part of that package. And it has a direct impact whether it's operating and being managed properly in a properly maintained facility. It has an impact on the amount of business that we do on the square. I'm open late every Friday and Saturday night and have been for 17 years. And I can tell you, if that Opera House is running, then we are busy right up until it's time for the folks to go to the show. It matters, and it has a direct economic impact on me and on every other business on that square, which then in turn has a direct impact on tax revenues and further business for Granberry in general. So, I would encourage you to accept this gift. And I also feel like when you have a community that rises to the occasion and comes up with the show of support that this community has come up with, that to refuse a gift is almost insulting. So, I encourage you to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, we'll hear from Linda Preston. State your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, please.
Linda Preston, 118 North Houston Street. Mayor Pratt, Mayor Pro Tim Parson, Councilman Perkel, Councilman Tyra, Councilman Allen, Councilman Hewlett. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on one of my favorite subjects, our prized town square. I have lived and worked on the town square for 32 and a half years. From a merchant's point of view, I have been here during their lucrative years as well as the lean years. I have learned the tourism business from the ground up, having served as President of the Merchants Association twice, the Historic Preservation Committee, the Board of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce Board, Preserve Granberry, and as a volunteer for many other projects relating to the town square. What I have learned about tourism is pretty simple. Tourism is a clean industry that enriches our community professionally and monetarily. People come to our community, spend their money on food, entertainment, and shopping. They go home afterwards and use their own water in city services. It is a clean industry and provides our community with the best of both worlds. What I know for sure is that tourism is a fickle business. It is dependent on the weather, the price of gas, the overall economy, and who is hot and who is not, usually determined by advertising. What is constant and does not change is local support. John and Becky Brumley have generously provided our community with $300,000 toward the purchase of the St. Helens Building and a challenge to match those funds from within our community. They believe, as I do, that this valuable space will make the revitalization of the Opera House even more spectacular. Sally Cleveland, also a member of our community, has given a significant amount toward making this dream come true. She has stressed to our committee how dearly her late husband Courts Cleveland loved the town square and especially the Opera House, and she dedicates her contribution in his honor. Charles and Dominique Inge have supported the arts in Granberry for many years. They have acted as advisors to preserve Granberry. They have rallied around the Langdon Center and have always been gracious and quick to share their knowledge and experience. It was a lucky day for Granberry when they decided to make Granberry their home. They also offered generous support to this project. I think that you can see from the attendance tonight that that support for the purchase of St. Helens does not end with these three people. We have been touched by the support of the community, each giving what they could and offering Preserve Granberry and Friends of the Opera House encouragement and enthusiasm. These sheer numbers offer the affirmation that will translate into season ticket holders. This will provide that community support that I spoke about earlier. And when the outlying areas realize what a jewel we have in our new director, Andrew Barris, and the beauty of our new facility, the tourists and the buses will return. As Darrell Royal used to say back in my days at the University of Texas, "I ask you to dance with those that brung us." Please accept this generous gift in the spirit that it is given. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. As you could tell, I sort of let her wrap stuff up so we're not holding strictly to the three-minute guideline. I do request that you try to keep it within three minutes. Mr. J.C. Campbell, if you would, please. Do me a favor and tap on that microphone to kick it into gear. Just swap him out for me, Rick, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead. My name is J.C. Campbell. I live at 2222 Acton Road. I do not live in the city, but the city of Granberry and Hood County is very important to me. 1951, um, 1960, my wife and I moved to Granberry. We went to Weatherford, we went to Cleburne, we went to Burleson, we went to a number of different towns, but nothing like Granberry, uh, nothing that these other towns had offered what Granberry did. Now, true, my wife is from Granberry. She was raised, went to school here, so that was a, she didn't want to move back, but, because she was raised here. But anyway, we didn't, I didn't want to raise our kids in Fort Worth or Irving or Dallas, which is where I'm from. But we came to Granberry because of what it had to offer. Just my luck. I know, I've been to where you guys are sitting up here before, and I know what's going through your mind, but one thing I'd like to ask you to do is to is to, is to remember that when you ran for office and you were elected, that the citizens of Granberry elected you to do what they think should be done for the city of Granberry. And I'd like to emphasize that each one of you have your ideas about it. That's great. But what you need to do is you need to put first and foremost what the city of Granberry is going to be best served by, because it is you that make the decision. You're the ones that lead the, lead the pack that tells us this is what we need to do. And so, I just ask that whenever we take this vote tonight, that you as a council, and the mayor and the council, all do this unanimously. This is something that needs to be done. It's not done for today or tomorrow. It's done for 10, or 15, or 25, or 50 years down the road. This is something that is very vital to the citizens of Granberry and also to Hood County, because to me, whenever I think of Hood County, I think of Granberry. And the same vice versa. But I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk, and I would ask for your, your vote on this to be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I'm going to invite Karen Roberts up to the podium.
Hello, I'm Karen Roberts at 220 Rent's Place Circle in Weatherford. I work here in Granberry as a Realtor, and I know
Scott, do me a favor and re, I'm sorry. Scott, would you reset the clock for?
Okay, now we have 10 minutes, our seconds. I, I work as a Realtor here, and I was drawn here to work here because of the beauty of the square and the lake. So, while you're talking about preserving your square and the beauty of the buildings there and the fun things to do down there, I want to also think about the lake and suggest that if there's some way of limiting the sale of, sale of water during the winter, I mean, just keep it in the winter months and let us have the lake as much as we can during the spring and summer, that will help property values and draw people to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, I invite Mayor David Southern. State your name and address, and we'll start the clock.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. David Southern, 226 East Pearl. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and the management for allowing me to speak tonight. Like J.C., I moved here 20 years later, 1980, and we picked Granberry because we thought it'd be a great place to raise our kids, and it has been. And now, our grandkids are being raised here. And I wanted to say that I wanted to speak tonight in favor of the donation of the St. Helens Building to the city for expansion of the Granberry Opera House. Shortly after the city acquired the Opera House, I attended a historic theater conference about restoration and tax credit programs for which they qualify. Several architects spoke. Without exception, they all agreed that space in any theater should be divided to one-third in the lobby, one-third in the audience area, and one-third for the stage and the backstage. The addition of the St. Helens Building gives you this opportunity without the need for much deconstruction of the existing indoor elements, and not only speeds up the construction time in my mind, but also reduces the amount of addition to the rear of the building. Although the interior elements of the Opera House are not original, they do represent contributions over almost 40 years of the community at large and the original organizers of the Granberry Opera House. Having traveled across the state and nation to historic cities, the comment I received time after time when people found out that I was from Granberry was the difference we had in historic restoration in our merchants area was that we offered a venue for live theater, and that was done through the Granberry Opera House. When I first elected, it was first elected, the City Council in 1985, the council had just voted as the request of the chamber to increase the bed tax from 4% to 7% in order to form a visitors bureau at the chamber. I was appointed to be the city's representative on the tourism advisory board at the chamber. One of the first requests for funds to the board came from Joanne Miller of the Granberry Opera House because ticket sales were not enough and the philanthropy that came at the beginning of the Opera House was decreasing. Not since that time until I've seen a group that has raised so much money in this community in so short a time for any project than this group has done. In fact, I was surprised that they raised the money, much less the time period that they did it in. This group seems dedicated to continuing a level of giving that will sustain the Opera House well into the future. I know as elective representatives of the citizens of Granberry, you want to do what is in the city's best interest. A little over a decade ago, the city decided to build this city hall. During the planning and construction of the building, we were all in tonight. There were all sorts of complaints about the cost and the size. Comments were made calling it the Southern Palace and even King David's Palace. However, when it opened, almost 10, it'd be 10 years ago this fall, the criticism stopped, and everyone began to talk about how visionary the council had been. A crowd this size that we have here tonight could not have been accommodated in our old council chambers, and this building has received architectural awards and praise from almost anyone who has seen or been within its halls. The council who authorized it is remembered as a visionary council when it came to moving forward on its construction at a time when others might not have. I believe the acceptance and use of the St. Helens Building along with the rebuilding of the Granberry Opera House will be viewed someday as a similar visionary moment for the current city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'm going to invite Sylvia Hickey to the microphone, please.
Mayor, Councilwoman. I was raised in a small but progressive Texas town, oh, sorry, 6309 Blackfoot.
Thank you, ma'am.
I was raised in a small progressive Texas town, and I was raised to be part of that community and support that community. And because of that, that's the way I go forward in this community. Our slogan in that town was Shop Gram, Keep Your Money at Home. Due to this background, I was right at home when Mike and I decided to start add-one and print-one, and helping others to successfully advertise their businesses really came natural. When the Lord dropped me here in Granberry and said, "Check this place out," again, it was a natural fit. And as we expanded into publishing the Granberry Showcase Magazine, it was a perfect way to learn more about my county and my city, my community, and call this place home. Today, we're thankful to be in the center of events, activities, and the growth of this city. We delivered the Showcase Magazine monthly for 10 years on our own because we decided this puts us in the place where we can be abreast of the successes and the failures. We can be in the middle of the ups and the downs. We can see the booms and the busts and know how the community is doing. Our goal through the magazine is to keep business here, to make business thrive, to educate people about what is here and what they can do and not have to go someplace else. Granberry is like no other place I've ever been. The Granberry history, building of the lake, someone's idea of it being a retirement place which has brought us a mix of old-timers and newcomers make us stand alone. This brings me to a question that I hope you will answer. How many of you on the council have lived here in Granberry for 20 years? Raise your hand. How many of you have lived here 15 years? How many have lived here 10 years?
Just, just so you're aware, we're not able to respond to you.
My point is, you know in your heart though, my point is that if you haven't lived here at least 15 years, you haven't seen the square and the Opera House at its peak. I've heard stories of retailers who, on a weekend, couldn't come out from behind the counter to say, "May I help you?" Because it was so busy in their stores, all they had time to do was to ring the cash register. And what would make it like that? Why would there be so many customers shopping? They had come to the Opera House, and they were either before or after the show, shopping and dining, and at that time, the house was full. Think about it. That's 600 people on Friday, 600 people on Saturday, and 300 people on Sunday, and that's what I call success for a city. My last statement is, build it and they will come to see your shows, to dine in your restaurants, to shop in your shops, to fill their cars with your gas, to stay in your accommodations. The combination of the Opera House building and the St. Helens Building can only make the crown jewel return our city to prominence in tourism. We will again be the city that other cities try to copy, and our businesses will again be in the good times. Thank you.
Joan Snyder. I hope I pronounced that correctly. State your name, your address, we'll start the clock.
Joan Snyder, 2400 Teal Place. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm a neighbor to many of you. I've lived in Granberry since 1990. I've raised my two children here, like many others. I moved here to raise my family. It's been, Granberry's been good to me. I have a son who's now a Boeing engineer in Seattle on the 777 as an aerospace engineer. I have a daughter who's a junior at TCU. Go Frogs! But I would like to say to you is, I've been tax-paying voting city resident since 1990. I am in support of the acceptance of the St. Helens Building. Over the years, I have quietly given money to many organizations in Hood County. Standing here, I am not just expressing my opinion, but back up my thoughts with volunteerism and financial support. In 2000, I proudly became a charter member of the Granberry Opera House Millennium Club. Carrying citizens joined together in the year 2000 to form this club to support the Opera House. Over a three-year time period, 93,000 was donated by generous citizens at $1,000 each. I would like to show the plaque that I received for my donation. 12 years later, most of the Millennium Clubs have given donations to purchase the St. Helens Building because we still care about our beloved Opera House. As councilmen, you have the opportunity tonight to impact our historic square in tourism. History will look back at your positive vote and show your true leadership and your vision for the future. If the St. Helens proposition is turned down, I believe that donations and attendance to the Opera House in the future will be negatively impacted. As an individual, I cannot make that decision for you, but I can control who I vote for, what businesses I patronize, and what contributions I make. I would like all the city residents in favor of the St. Helens donations to please quietly stand and join me to show your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. While you're standing, I'll invite Gary Couch up to the microphone. Once again, state your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, sir.
My name is Gary Couch. I live at 1903 Hubbard Lake Drive. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity. This is an exciting night for the city of Granberry. In less than eight short weeks, an unprecedented $600,000 has been donated for the expansion of the Opera House. The donations have ranged from $25 to $300,000. This is certainly one for the record books. This generosity has come from This generosity has come from residents of the city, the county, and even the metroplex. Even though St. Helen's is a city project, the Opera House charm and appeal is far-reaching, serving a 100-mile radius. The benefits from St. Helen's expansion will benefit our local community, both from increased sales tax revenues, increased sales for our local merchants, and enriching our cultural district. I recently purchased Lodge of Granbury and I'm in the process of transitioning from a hotel to an upscale lakefront community. We are having great success and interest in both leasing and selling our newly renovated condominiums. We are trying to provide not just a nice apartment or condo, but a lifestyle. This lifestyle includes lounging at the lakefront pool, having coffee on your balcony, and a short walk to the square for shopping and afternoon lunch. My decision to make this investment was based on the direction the downtown area would take. Even though there were those that said, "It is too risky, play it safe, be content with what you have," I followed my gut and my deep belief in this community and I moved forward with the best decision of my career. I believe we are at the beginning stages of a rebirth to our square and the Opera House is at the absolute center. The merchant success on and off the square is directly related to the success of the Opera House. The St. Helen's Building addition will increase the chances for that success. It will provide restrooms on the square and a visitor's center. The visitor's center will be able to link customers with businesses, hotels, restaurants, entertainment, apartments, and many other services. St. Helen's will also provide additional revenue sources to the city. I will gladly pay for the opportunity to advertise on a video kiosk in the visitor's center. This is just one example of potential revenue. The St. Helen's addition also allows for the growth of not just the theater, but our entire community. The anticipated population for Hood County in 2020 is projected to be 70,000, a 40% increase from 2010. The city population is expected to reach 12,000. It is vitally important that the decision you make, will make tonight, is based on that growth. Even though this has been a contentious issue and process, it was the right process and it has made this night so worth it. I thank this council for the talents they put forth. For if it had not been for such strong concerns about the cost taxpayers by council members, these donations and overwhelming support would have never been realized. The enthusiasm that has reached all over this county would never have been created and the sense of community gained from this experience would never have been enjoyed. The most valuable asset a city can have is to have citizens that are willing to donate their time and money for the greater good of their community. I ask you to please recognize that you represent such a community. I believe this decision you will make tonight will be one of the most important decisions you will make as city council members. This decision will take this community on two very different paths. It will be a path of opening a door that encourages community involvement in donating their time and money, both for this project and future projects, or it will be a path that closes that door for a very long time. The question tonight is no longer, "What is the cost to the city if you accept this donation?" But rather, "What is the cost to the city if you do not?" Councilman Parson, Councilman Allen, Councilman Tyra, Mayor Pratt, Councilman Perkel, Councilman Hewitt, please do not let this rare opportunity pass you by. Bring this community together by encouraging citizens to get involved by giving back and paint a clear, bright future for Granbury by voting unanimously to accept this generous gift. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to invite the final speaker that signed up for open mic. That is Mr. Jack Williams. State your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, sir.
My name is Jack Williams. My address is 5311 Mission Circle. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as president of the Granbury Brigade, I am happy to report to you that we did contribute to the purchase of the St. Helen's Building in the hope that this city council would accept such a magnificent $600,000 gift. We think it's a very worthy business transaction. We think that the purchase of that building will enhance the Opera House by providing additional entrance into the theater and by providing decent bathrooms for the ladies. Every lady in this room will agree with me.
I wasn't expecting a comedy routine, sir. But carry on.
Yes, sir. The Brigade is a volunteer organization and we stand ready to support Mr. Andrew Barris in his endeavors. We like Andrew Barris. As a matter of fact, we have already supported him in endeavors. We ask that you support this request. We think it's worthwhile and we pray that you will approve it. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my remarks. I want to thank you, sir, and your committee or your council for allowing me to speak and express our position. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. That moves us off of open mic night. We are now going to take up the consent agenda. First up under the consent agenda, we have the February, the January 3rd minutes to consider along with the January 17th minutes. You will have found them in your packet information, councilmembers. I understand that Mr. Parson has a statement he would like to reflect as to the January 3rd minutes. Mr. Parson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the January 3rd meeting, item number 12-11, in which we were asked to consider and approve an ordinance abolishing the Tourism Advisory Board, Mr. Tyra presented that item. And in his discussion about that, he said that he had a really good reason to abolish that board, but he couldn't discuss it that night. I would like the minutes to reflect that statement. If there's any future events that come up, that needs to be in there that the rest of the council might not have had information that they needed to make decisions about that.
State your language again, sir, that you're wanting to add the language.
Mr. Tyra said he had a really good reason to abolish that board, but he couldn't discuss it that night.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify.
Give me just a second, please.
And I think this can be resolved pretty easy, Mayor.
I'm just trying to get his language right. And you're saying, just for clarification, you're saying nowhere in the minutes did you find that?
It wasn't noted in the minutes and I thought it was pretty germane to the conversation and to the motion or to the resolution.
All right.
Mayor, since-
Mr. Tyra, go ahead.
Since the fellow councilman's trying to change the language that I stated, I would like to make sure we do this the correct way because what he just stated was actually out of context to what I said. So I would like to table these minutes until the city secretary go back and get us a recording of that. And she knows, like she's done for us before, when there's a question about fact, we go back to the recording and I'd like to hear that as well because we talked about that situation and I said I wouldn't say anything negative. And so there were certain things that I was not going to say, but I did say several items as far as my decision-making that night and why I was trying to do what I was trying to do. But yes, there was a statement and Mickey was close, but he was out of context because there were certain things that I stated I would not talk about because they were negative. And that's the context it was set in, so I'd like to-
Thank you, sir.
-put this on the table where we can get it right.
In response to that, I would entertain a motion to postpone the consent item regarding the January 3rd minutes-
Don't move.
...until such time that the secretary can bring us back verbatim language regarding item number 12-011.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra, a second by Mr. Parson. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That'll bring us down to item, January 17th minutes. I would like to point out that I noted a request for a change in language in item number 12-014. If you look at the bottom of the page where 12-014 occurs, in the bottom section, it states "The city manager stated the estimates for upgrading this property to comply with code are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years." I think that that may not be the best statement. I, when I was brought into my understanding regarding any improvements or estimates regarding repairs to the property, it was not to bring them into code, but to just do some repairs on the property. I would suggest that we change that to read that "The city manager stated the estimates for repairs of the property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years."
Mayor, is that, are the buildings up to code? I know we had a discussion one time before with Scott. If they were some problems down there.
There are none that we are aware of at this time that are not to code. That's why I-
Well, the chimney, no, that's not true. It's not true.
Then I want some clarification as to whether or not all of the property needs $225,000 to bring it up to code.
I don't think it takes the whole amount, but I do remember Scott saying there was some stuff that had to be done.
And the chimney was the situation-
Yeah, the separation of the chimney-
Chimney was fixed with a fall. I mean, there was a question about it going to fall or not.
There's a, there's a, you put your hands between-
Once again, my question is, does that entail spending $225,000 to bring the property-
Some of that, $225,000.
-to code?
No, some of the finish $225,000.
Some of it. I just want some clarification that repairs of the property are approximately $225,000.
I've never seen a written estimate on any of the repairs.
Nor have any of us. We saw an, a building inspector who inspected the property gave us an approximation of 225, 250. But I, I just, I just want to talk about the language that we have before us.
Mayor, what do you don't like about the language?
Because it states that the entire, "For upgrading this property to comply with code are approximately $225,000." My point is, it's not $225,000 to bring it up to code. There are some repairs and maintenance. I think the word "code" needs to be taken out of it. As I stated, I would like to strike the portion that says "Upgrading the property to comply with code," change it to read "Estimates for repairs of the property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years."
Well, here's, here's my question.
Just for clarification.
Well, but if that wasn't said, then you shouldn't change it. If that was stated right there, well, then it should be what it was stated. That's what minutes are about. If that was stated in this meeting at that date, then we should leave it alone. I mean, I hear what you're saying. You're wanting to clean it up after the fact, but I don't see how that would be proper if that's what was stated that night.
Because the intent of the language, I think it was just a misspeak.
From you or from our city manager?
From the city manager.
Mayor, let me ask you this. Are we going to bring it up to code?
Yes, this is going to be the first thing we do.
If you don't bring it up to code, I agree with what you're saying. The whole $225 shouldn't be up to code, but maybe a different way of wording is that-
What did we say?
Going to include-
Estimates for upgrading this property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years, including work to bring it up to code.
Now, you put "including," that takes care of both of them.
I'm fine with that. I just don't want it to read that it's going to take 225 to bring it up to code because we know that's not the fact. All right, so any other changes or amendments to the minutes? City secretary, did you understand that change of language? If not, I'll ref, I'll-
I'll work with you on it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other changes? All in favor of the consent agenda item regarding the January 17th minutes? I do need a motion to accept the minutes as amended, please.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Hewitt, a second by Mr. Allen. Any other discussion regarding it? All in favor of making a motion to approve the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to item number one. Consider and approve a resolution accepting the donation of the St. Helen's Building, agreeing to make application to replat the St. Helen's Building into the footprint of the Opera House property, agreeing to include the St. Helen's Building in ongoing renovations of the Granbury Opera House, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of this property. Councilmembers, I brought this to the agenda after having received a request by some parties that were involved in the donation. At this time, I'd like to invite those parties to speak at the podium. First up, I'd like to call Claudia Southern. And just for an overview as to what's going to take place, we are going to invite the speakers to the podium. We will hear from them, councilmembers. While that speaker is at the podium, you may ask them a question regarding anything they might state or any questions you might have of them. After they sit back down, and we've heard from all four, by the way, there are four speakers that we will call upon, you will then have an opportunity for discussion with any of them if you so feel the need to follow up with follow-up questions after hearing from them. And then we'll move on to motion debate. Ms. Southern, if you would, please. State your name and your address for the record, please, and your association, please.
Hello, my name is Claudia Southern. I live at 226 East Pearl. I am president of Preserve Granbury and have been the chairman of this drive with five other community organizations to bring to you a most magnificent gift. I want to introduce to you two individuals that have directly been involved in presenting a great amount of money to this particular fundraising event. You have in your packets a third from the Brumleys who wrote a letter and I hope that you have it in your packet where you may read it. Mr. Brumley had to have surgery.
I think that's Mr. Inge.
Inge, excuse me. Mr. Inge had to have surgery yesterday and cannot be here tonight, so his letter represents him. First, I want to introduce to you John Brumley. It is John and Becky Brumley of Hood County who gave us $300,000 and a challenge to raise another $300,000 in order to purchase the St. Helen's Building.
Mr. Brumley, do me a favor. State your name, your address, and the foundation that you represent, please, sir.
Sure, I'm John Brumley, 2901 Temple Hall Highway. We've lived here for about seven years. This is my wife Becky and that's who I'm representing, Becky and myself.
Very, very good, sir. That will be good when you get home.
Mr. Mayor and the city council, I want to thank you for this opportunity of being here tonight. Thank all these wonderful people that have come out and pledged their support to the acquisition of St. Helen's. I, I'm a businessman, just like you are. And I understand that some of you are concerned about the acquisition and the integration of St. Helen's as may perhaps being unnecessary, perhaps may even lose money. And I want to say to you, it's not unnecessary, but occasionally these things lose money. And you can't get around that in the arts and that's part of it. But we can do things with an advocacy group like this to overcome that. And that's what we'll do. If you look at the Fort Worth rodeo, that doesn't make money. Only reason that makes money is because the advocates buy the boxes and they buy tickets to every one of them, every rodeo performance. And then therefore, if it's not doing well, you raise the ticket price and the box is the advocacy group and it makes money. Bass performance hall, it doesn't make money every year. Bass Performance Hall, it, it doesn't make money every year, but you have advocacy groups that support it. And you've got an advocacy group right here that you can't believe that's gonna make this thing thrive. And, and I think that's the most important thing that we have right now, is advocacy in Granberry. That's why it's the wonderful city that it is. All these people, you know, when I came and talked to you, we thought it's gonna take a year to raise that money. I asked you to set out a cycle. You said, "No, we can't set out a cycle." We didn't have to set out a cycle. All these people got to work, and they raised this money in eight weeks. I mean, literally unbelievable. Um, so as a board, I think one of your responsibilities is to help with this advocacy group, to help them do what they need to do, and be a part of that. I mean, I think that's what all of us need to do. That's what Becky and I are trying to do. Um, so, that's what we're looking at tonight, and then, I think, we need to broaden our scope of what this can become. I, I talked to you a little bit about the first time, about a lecture series. Well, I'm not gonna let go of that. I mean, I think we need a lecture series in Granberry, Texas. I think that's pretty cool. You know, I'm on the board of MD Anderson. Um, MD Anderson is the finest medical research institute in the world, has over a hundred thousand patients. You know, they do great things right now with stem cell research. They do great things with genetic, uh, profiling. And we need to get those people up here to Granberry, Texas, to tell us about it. I think that would really be fun. Becky and I would sponsor that. It wouldn't cost a thing. You know, we would sponsor that. We may or may not, you may or may not wanna charge for a ticket. I mean, that, that would be up to you. But I think you sell those six hundred, if you sell them for a dollar, two dollars, people be wanting to come. People come from Dallas. People coming from Fort Worth. You know, all of a sudden, you're creating a buzz. I think things like nuclear non-proliferation, have somebody from, you know, one of these great universities that we have, come and talk to us about what's going on in Iran, what's going on in Pakistan, you know, what's going on in North Korea. I mean, you can go on and on. I mean, and you will have ideas that I would never have, but I think it broadens this whole hori- horizon of what this can become, and you create a buzz. I mean, it's, it's, it becomes the Granberry buzz, and now you, you read about it then in Texas Monthly. And, you know, towns that have buzzes now are like Albany and, and the Fandangle, and they've got a great square. I mean, we need that. I mean, we, we can do that same thing. You know, our shops can be as good as a Salado shop. There's no reason our shops shouldn't be every bit as good as what they have, or Fredericksburg or Curville. I mean, we've become our own buzz. You know, we've got this fantastic lake, we've got this fantastic square, you know, it, and so when Becky and I thought of doing this, I mean, we became tremendously excited. But, the only thing that, we, we didn't want to be out front on this deal. You know, we thought we would do this anonymously, and, and we told Joey that. I said, "You know, Joey, keep this quiet. Don't, don't tell anyone." We talked to him. Hey, Joey kept it quiet, but little did we know that the mayor set us up in a, in a public forum meeting. I mean, we hadn't, not the slightest idea of it, and it's not your fault, Mayor. We should've figured this out before we got there. But, all of a sudden, we were at a public forum, and we thought we were secret. Uh, but I think that if we can retain that original footprint of the Opera House, and then integrate the other thing with Saint Helens, we're gonna really have something. And that's what excited Becky and me. I mean, and, and this group of people, we would've never gotten to know if, like we have gotten to know them if this hadn't happened. I think the process has been good. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity for this process. I've enjoyed helping raise a little bit of the money on the side, you know. I only made four phone, phone calls, three of them gave. I mean, you know, that's, that's pretty good. But, I, I appreciate you, uh, I appreciate what you've done, what you've gone through. Uh, I hope you vote for this. Becky and I pledged, you know, our support. Let, let me tell you one other thing about Becky. She came in here late today, but, but she doesn't know I'm gonna say this, but, in Fort Worth, Texas, every elementary school student in the first or second grade goes to Bass Performance Hall, and they hear Peter and the Wolf. And to all those schools that are poor, where the parents can't buy books, Becky furnishes the books. And so they go to Peter and the Wolf, they have all these yellow school buses up and down Main Street, you know, at least once a week. Well, let's get Becky to do that here. There's no reason she can't do that here. And, and that's what we want. That's really what we want, isn't it? Thank you.
Council members, council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Brumley?
Claudia's done.
Uh, I'm, Mr. Brumley is, is done, and I'm asking if you have any questions for Mr. Brumley at this time. Well, we can call him back up if you have some later.
Well, I didn't know if, if Claudia was done speaking yet.
No, she's going to introduce the next, next guest. This isn't the last of them.
Mr. Brumley, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Uh, can, uh, you talked about the, uh, the, uh, expansion with the Saint Helens Building. Can you do all that with the existing footprint?
Of the expansion, of what we've seen?
No, no, no. Can you do everything that you talked about just with the present footprint, with the little, with just the footprint of the Opera House without the Saint Helens Building?
I don't think so. I don't think it's being. I mean, they, I don't, I don't, I don't want to be argumentative, but I think-
No, 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 I don't want you to-
I, I think keeping the footprint exactly the same as it was, without adding bathrooms, without taking part of the balcony, I think those things are important, so, no. I think that it needs to be integrated and do the things that we talked about.
Any other questions for Mr. Brumley? All right. Mr. Allen here.
Are you saying that you would, uh, want to not add on to what we got right now? Just use the footprint like they got designed?
I would keep the historic footprint of the Opera House as much like it is as I possibly can, and, and, but to improve on it. And then I would put all the restrooms, the other facilities in Saint Helens. I mean, that, that's the way I would do it. But I would build, you know, I would do what has been proposed by this group of people.
But the way it's designed now, we can get more seats in it than the way it is right now. So, you're saying we don't need-
Well, perhaps, but I want, but I want it to keep as historically as I can, to what the original footprint is.
So, seats is not really a, a problem, what you're saying?
Well, I mean, I mean, they always go somewhere.
You hope it is, too.
That'd be a problem, I think. I think the historical-
I'd like to remind, uh, council that he's not really an architect. He's here as, uh, a donor to the project, and so, asking him about architectural aspects of the venue may not be appropriate, councilman.
I know, Mayor, but he's the one that brought this stuff up.
Better answer it off.
Anybody else? Ms. Southern, you're invited back up.
Sally Cleveland is larger than life. I have loved her, uh, from the first moment I saw her in the, in the early eighties, and, uh, she has inspired me forever and still does. However, her health is not really good right now, and so she is being represented tonight by, uh, Mr. Dan White. He is the executor of Quartz Estate, and also, he handles, uh, financial affairs for Sally. Dan?
Mr. White, if you would, please state your name and, uh, your address, as well as mentioning the foundation or trust that you serve, sir.
My name is Dan White. I live at eighty-eight oh-three Belchase Road, and I'm representing Sally Cleveland in the Quartz Cleveland Estate. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening, and as trustee for the Quartz and Sally Cleveland Estate, I'm here on behalf of Sally to offer comments and strong support of the city of Granberry's acceptance of the Saint Helens Building, along with the additional excess funds to be integrated into the existing Opera House plans. Through the generosity and vision of John and Becky Brumley, the hard work and leadership of Preserve Granberry, and the generous outpouring of community support that we've seen with this project, the stars have literally lined up for the city of Granberry to have an opportunity the type of which rarely ever comes along. Since I'm here on behalf of the Cleveland's, I'd like to share something with you that Quartz once told me. Years ago, I was considering the purchase of some adjacent ranch land, and I asked Quartz what he thought about it. And after going through all the finer points and the details and the specifics, Quartz just sat back, and with that smile of his, he said, "You know, my daddy always told me, 'Son, the only land I ever wanted was my neighbor's.'" In s- in simple business terms, anytime your neighbor's land becomes available, you better take a hard look at it, because whether you realize it or not, it has strategic value to you. The Saint Helens B- Building is certainly of strategic value to the Granberry Opera House, and the window of opportunity is now open. It's worth emphasizing again, the Saint Helens Building is being offered as a gift. Funds are already on deposit in the bank and ready to go. Contrary to rumor, this gift is not a maybe type of pledge, nor is the city being asked to purchase the building. It's being offered as a gift with the condition that it be integrated into the Granberry Opera House, already owned by the, by the city. Acceptance of this gift is not forcing the city to enter a new business line. That decision was already made when the city took over the opera, and it was later reaffirmed by the one-point-two-five million dollar approval to renovate the existing opera facility. To use an analogy, to not accept this gift would be like someone being offered a free Corvette and not taking it because they didn't wanna buy gasoline. In difficult economic times, such public-private sector partnerships are all the more important for governmental entities such as the city of Granberry to pursue, and are becoming more commonplace across the nation. As a matter of fact, municipal ownership of historic facilities is also, uh, more and more common across the United States. The Saint Helens Building accept, acceptance will sent, will exemplify such public-private cooperative partnerships, and in my twenty years of living in Granberry, I, I cannot recall such a groundswell of enthusiasm and outpouring of community support for any project such as this one. With a proposal now up for your consideration, you have a neat, a unique opportunity to acquire this strategic property through private donations. As I said earlier, the stars really have lined up for Granberry. This chance to integrate two historic properties, thus greatly enhancing the long-term operation and viability of the Opera House, is unprecedented and will likely never come again, especially since funds are now available and the upcoming renovation can very easily be modified. Utilizing the additional ninety-five thousand dollars now being offered, along with the building, such modifications should pose minimal if any additional cost to the city. The most cost-effective time to combine these two buildings is clearly now, before the renovation, not afterwards. Many tangible benefits will result from this project. I would like to touch on just a few of them. The first is better access for individuals like me with physical disabilities. From a personal standpoint, I stopped wanting to go to the opera years ago because of the cramped lobby and difficult restroom access. For folks with balance issues, a larger lobby will certainly make, make for a much easier environment to physically navigate, especially during the intermissions. Everyone is getting older, and unfortunately, more and more folks will be facing physical challenges. That's a fact of life. I firmly believe that the inclusion of the Saint Helens Building will draw more folks like myself back to the opera and attract many new patrons. Secondly, in the event of a fire or other emergency, while the current plans do meet code, the Saint Helens addition will add tremendous safety benefits beyond just the minimum, such as enhanced egress to minimize the chance of a stampede. An improved concession stand will streamline the intermission process, reducing time between acts. The intent is not meal service, rather drinks and light snacks to enhance the intermission, which by the way, will be a much more enjoyable experience in a more spacious setting. As the customer base expands, this will only benefit local restaurants, not detract from them. Perhaps nearby establishments would benefit significantly from simply adjusting their schedules to attract the opera crowd for before or after-performance meals or refreshments, not just campaigning against the opera facility, in hopes of driving a frustrated patron into their establishment for relief and repose. Volunteers stand ready to operate such a first-class concession stand, thus adding an amenity to the Opera House for very little cost. In terms of city tax revenue lost, if Saint Helens is accepted, that figure is only about thirteen-hundred dollars. Sales tax won't really be lost, as I'm told that the current owners plan to relocate their business, uh, at the square. Furthermore, for many of us, the Opera House is our first recollection of having visited Granberry. A first-class facility will ultimately attract new residents to Hood County. Should only one or two of those folks eventually relocate and build in Granberry after a pleasant weekend visit, as I once did, any impact to the local tax base will be more than offset. And by the way, it'll be far more than one or two or three relocations as a result, particularly if this project is approached correctly with vision and leadership. Success breeds success. A nice facility will not only attract more patrons, but better performers. If properly managed and promoted, we can easily expect opera revenues to increase. Very little cost will be added by accepting the Saint Helens Building due to economies of scale. In general, the same maintenance will simply be provided over a larger space. While current operations are not profitable on a standalone basis, the very small incremental cost of accepting this building donation will yield a very high incremental rate of return for the Opera House. In simple terms, you now have the opportunity to invest a very small amount to make the Opera House a much more appealing and user-friendly facility. Please do not miss this golden opportunity. As evidenced by strong community support, particularly in a weak economy, you're saying no to this project could have a very negative consequence in terms of future community spirit and willingness to get behind such cooperative projects between the public and private sectors in Granberry. No one wants to be in the undesirable position, ten years down the road, of wishing the Saint Helens Building would've been accepted. The good news is this: you folks have the ability to prevent that from ever happening right here, right now, tonight. To hearken back to the words of Quartz Cleveland, "Your neighbor's place is now available." Don't miss this once-in-a-lifetime strategic opportunity. On behalf of Sally Cleveland, I urge you to vote yes to accept the Saint Helens Building and incorporate it into the upcoming Granberry Opera House renovation. Thank you and good evening.
Ms. Southern, I understand you have one more speaker to present?
One more speaker, yes. Uh, the Granberry Opera House has not run well without the Granberry Opera Guild, who has worked tirelessly through the years for various projects for the Opera House. Oona Pruitt is here tonight to speak for us, uh, and to talk to us about the Guild's involvement and belief in this project.
I'm Oona Pruitt. I live at fifty-eight oh-one Matlock Road, that is in the Acton area, Hood County. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, for allowing us to come before you. I'm here to ask you to consider and approve a resolution to accept the gift of the Saint Helens Building. There have been some wonderful words tonight to help make your decision a smoother transition. As you can tell by each one of the previous speakers, we appeal to you to help us keep the Opera House going and to enlarge the facility to include the Saint Helens Building. I'm representing the Opera Guild of Granberry. The Guild was formed in nineteen-seventy-eight for the purpose of support for the Granberry Opera House. We have fundraisers with one-hundred percent of the money raised going to support the Opera House. In the past, we have had afternoon teas and had a very large gathering of community people. It is not necessary to be a Guild member to enjoy our fundraisers. There was an Opera House cookbook with recipes from the staff and actors that we sold to the community and raised quite a bit of cash. We have had bingo nights at the Granberry Conference Center, and again, a very large turnout. Some of our winning awards were donated from the local merchants, and always, the community is very supportive for Guild fundraisers. The membership of the Guild, at one time, was quite a large group. We are a much smaller, active group of over sixty-five members. Anyone that would like to join us as an active- Anyone that would like to join us as an active member may do so and enjoy our luncheons once a month. Volunteers need a project, and we have not had the opportunity to do anything for the Opera House for a while. We want to change that and grow with the Opera House. We want you to support the Opera House, and we are ready to continue to support the Opera House by offering our services to the production company however we can assist. In the past, we have ushered for the performances, supplied and served food for strike night and cast parties. We have assisted with formal opening nights and after-performance parties. Some of our members have assisted with props and costumes. The Guild has cleaned and remodeled rooms at the dorm for visiting actors and resident company. And yes, we've done toilets, too. By the City Council accepting this great gift of the St. Helen's Building, it proves you really do care about the people of this community. The renovation will improve the ability to bring back tourism dollars and tax money to Granberry. The Guild wants the City Council members to know we stand behind the group of community people to purchase St. Helen's Building and incorporate it into the renovation of the Opera House. The Guild has some monies to contribute to the Opera House for renovation, equipment materials, for props, and many other items as we deem necessary. But our major focus is to support the Opera House with volunteers however we can. We would be available to assist with the sales and souvenir shop. We also have memorabilia from Joanne Miller's estate and would like to be able to display some of it so visitors to Granberry and attendees to the show could enjoy it. Our contributions are endless when the Opera House reopens. Thank you for the opportunity to let you know how the Guild supports the city and the Opera House, and once again, ask you to incorporate the gift of St. Helen's Building into the Opera House footprint. Thank you.
Ms. Southern, did you have any closing remarks?
Faith is the substance of things hoped for, the presence of things unseen. When we gathered about eight weeks ago to talk about bringing St. Helen's into the Opera House, we met as a pretty discouraged crowd. In my time in Granberry, since 1980, I have worked in lots of organizations and done lots of volunteer work, and I've always been delighted when someone has given us $1,000 or a project that we had done brought about $5,000. I had never heard in Granberry of having people to offer $300,000 to a project. Further, I had never heard of someone turning that down. So, we got together and said, "Whoa, what are we going to do with this? What are we going to do with this?" And several organizations, five that I will mention tonight, went to work to see if there was something that we could do. The five organizations represented here tonight are: The Guild, as you've heard, the Millennium Club, the Lake Granberry Art Association, the Brigade, and Preserve Granberry. Mary, did I get them all? And the Historic Merchants Association, excuse me, at six. The idea of utilizing the St. Helen's Building goes back at least 20 years. Joanne Miller was talking about it. Eddie Lane talked about it. I thought it was my idea, and there are people all over this room that know that it was a good idea. Our problem was money. If you have served on the Opera House Board, as many people in this audience have, we worked every single year tirelessly, simply to pay bills. Finally, it got to the point where the last Opera Board was unable to do so and needed the help of the City of Granberry, who came in determined not to let the Opera House, our crown jewel, to fail. So, we all gathered, a discouraged bunch, and said, "What can we do?" We decided, first of all, we would have to ask the St. Helen's people if they would still sell their building. They have a very nice business there, if you've been in there, it's lovely. And we didn't know if they would really still sell their building. Secondly, we hated to lose that wonderful business to the square, but there are several buildings available on the square, and our understanding is that they intend to relocate. So, we will not be losing a business, but gaining something wonderful for the Opera House. When they said, "Okay, we'll sell," we needed to talk to the Brumleys to see if we'd have any money to offer them. And we didn't quite know how that would go, but they were as excited as we were, and in fact, gave us a lot of encouragement to get started. Now, we are smack dab in the middle of Thanksgiving, candlelight tour, and Christmas. And there were lots of times that many people could not meet, and it is just too much for me to think that we were able to do this. We wanted very much to include the city, to not break any laws by having forums, but we knew we needed to get to work. We went back to the minutes of the October 18th meeting of the Historic Granberry Properties Board, and I would like to read to you from those minutes because this was our chart. Mr. Tyra said that he felt the Brumleys should go forward with their plan, possibly with a nonprofit arrangement, that would be all the rest of us, and partnering with the city. Mr. Brumley said he would have to have confidence that if he goes forward with the fundraising, that the plan includes expanding in a later phase. Tyra encouraged the Brumleys to approach the City Council with their plan. Here we are. Here we are with a tremendously wonderful gift. And I have more to tell you about that gift as we go along. In this endeavor, we are trying to be as far-sighted as our preservation leaders, who originally led the community-wide effort to restore the Opera House in the early 70s. We truly believe that today's effort will be a time to raise the curtain on a new era for the Granberry Opera House, and you should have that brochure in your packet as well, and to ensure a viable, long-term future ahead for our beloved community treasure, which was handed down to us by several generations of residents. We wonder about, or we are asking, couldn't you do all of this in the single footprint? Why do we need this other space? Mr. Allen has asked that. People with disabilities have tremendous problems in the current Opera House. And my dad is with me tonight, and he's gone to the Opera House for years and years. It is difficult for him to maneuver with his pain when he is going into the seats. In addition to that, we have to sort of stand around him and make sure that he doesn't lose his balance and fall. People who are in wheelchairs get to the point where they do not come to the Opera House anymore, and yet, we say that it would be wonderful to have buses of people to come to the Opera House, and often, those are senior citizens. I was reading a book recently, and it turns out I'm a senior citizen, so there you go. But at any rate, these are people who often have time to go to plays and to activities. Indeed, my dad lives at Waterview, and over that same period of time, we were trying to raise all this money, his crew went to the baths, they went to Cleburne, to the Playhouse over there, and to the Granberry Opera House. So, there's a tremendous interest from older people to be involved with what's going on in the Opera House, and they need that place to be accessible. So, you say, "Let's just do it in the single footprint." The problem is, without more exits, we cannot get people out of that Opera House. If you are at the theater in New York or London, and the end of the performance happens, a whole side wall opens up so that people may go out of that side wall. With St. Helen's, we have that opportunity. Without it, we are left with the two exits at the front and the two exits at the back, and even an airplane doesn't try to get by with that kind of exits for its people. So, we have a tremendous disability issue and one that we should address. As you know, and I'm sure the single footprint intends to change this, but the bathrooms are absolutely a disgrace. And people cannot get in them well. We need more bathrooms. I believe Councilman Hewlett said, "Why do we need all these bathrooms?" And many of the rumors I've heard around town, and I'm hoping to address them all. But the reason is, when you're in a play, intermission happens at the same time for everyone. If you're at a sporting event, you can come and go. But if you're in a play and you're interested in that play, intermission happens at the same time, and we need more restrooms to help accommodate our guests. Since the visitor center has been off the square, there have been all kinds of people saying that we need a presence of a visitor center on the square. We could accomplish this at St. Helen's. Furthermore, if people came in there to get ideas of what to do in Granberry, we could have a film that went on in the Opera House that you could turn on with a button. People could advertise on that as they do at the movies, and we could hear about Granberry and also earn a little income here. And we could have a refreshment spot. All of these things would be things that we can add to that we do not have room for in the current footprint. We also do not have room for a vestibule or a place for people to gather. They're gathering on the street. When the intermission happens and people come out, many go toward the coffee grinder or to get something to drink or whatever, and then there is no place for them to be. We need to have a foyer. That foyer could be used also as a rental. Say you're going to have 18 or 20 people over for dinner. Bass Hall uses their landing to accommodate small reception and so on. We could do the same. As you all know, Granberry recently acquired the Langdon Center. The opportunities of putting the Langdon Center and the Opera House together with the lecture series that John is so fond of, with other things that can come from having our partnership with Charlton are endless. There's all kinds of things that we can do. Currently, the Neely House down at Lambert Branch has had a little cleanup. I understand there are bathrooms there and some meeting space. I just accidentally discovered this. I hadn't heard anything about it, but I happened to be driving by there on a Sunday morning. And it's being used as a church, family reunions, weddings, and there's classrooms. And I have been told by our city manager that, woe and behold, without any advertising, the cost of renovation to that Neely House is about paid for. So, imagine if we had the Opera House that could be rented out occasionally for corporate kinds of gatherings. Granberry's Board of Directors visited, tried to visit with the mayor and all the City Council members. And we tried to listen to what they had to say and to also what the rest of the community had to say. Mr. Hewlett made us aware that he was concerned about being able to renovate the Opera House. "How would you do that? You give us a gift of $575,000, but it's got a huge price tag on it." It's an excellent point. So, we've been raising more money. We are right now up to, I think, 95,000, over and above the purchase price. In our little post office box, every time we go to the post office, we're beginning to call it the money place. Yesterday, we received $25,000. Today, we received $1,100,000. So, there is tremendous interest in this Opera House and people that want to be involved in the renovation. I don't know if $95,000 covers the renovation of the St. Helen's Building, but I do know, we would like to not be done. We've done this in eight weeks, and there's a lot of people we haven't visited with, and y'all know your names out there. We haven't been to all the civic clubs. We haven't been to all the businesses. We haven't been to the schools. We haven't talked to every long-term supporter and donor of the Granberry Opera House. We had to move fast and quick and look at what we've done. So, if you give us more time, we know that there are lots of things that we need at that Opera House. We need to renovate St. Helen's. We need a new curtain. Ugh, that curtain's bad. We need lighting, and we need sound. We need state-of-the-art. What we have in lighting nearly burned my daughter up the year she interned as a summer intern, because she was holding it all, and it just, you know, we had all these burns on her arms when she came home from work. We need state-of-the-art, and those things do not come cheap. If you all allow us, we will keep raising money. We think that this Opera House is so important and that people are so interested in it that they will continue to donate. To give you an idea of what we've got going now, the Brigade has about 96 members. The Opera Guild has about 87. HGMA has 70 businesses. Preserve Granberry has 81 members. Millennium Club has 33. I'm not sure of the number of members of the Lake Granberry Art Association. That adds up to 367 people. In terms of donors, 114 individuals have donated, 23 businesses, six groups, which adds up to 143. If you add those together, we're at 510. And that's just a small number of people who support this Opera House. Look at how full this building is. Councilman Allen expressed concern about ongoing maintenance costs for the building. So, okay, you gift us the building, and then you renovate the building, and then what are we going to do about the maintenance and repair? Well, of course, my favorite example is the one that Dan gave about the Corvette, but I think that there are people that are willing to leave space within the St. Helen's Building. I know the Opera Guild would like to have a place where they could display all of the memorabilia that we have from Joanne Miller, and not just Joanne Miller, but from all of the time. I don't think it'd all fit in there. We'd have to have different shows. So, I think there are many, many ways that we can raise money at St. Helen's to help with everything that's going on in the Opera House. Another concern, and I'm not sure where it originated, is that the Texas Historic Commission would not allow anything at the Opera House since it is a registered Texas landmark. Not only is that... I'm sorry, I just got this today. I just found out this was a concern over the weekend. Not only is it a registered Texas landmark, as you know, the whole square sits on the National Historic Register. So, the question, as I understood it, was... So, the question, as I understood it, was the Texas Historic Commission would come down and not allow any of the renovation inside the building, because they would want to be involved in all that. Two things to note. First of all, nothing in that building predates was a part of the original. It's all been added in the last forty years. And while some of us, my husband included, would like to keep some of the things that have been added there, nothing in there is historic. The Historic Commission, the Texas Historic Commission, would have nothing to say about the interior. The second question, as I understood it, was, well, okay, if you take on the... if you take out the back wall and expand to have more room for staging and so on, which we desperately need, the Texas Historic Commission's going to get involved in that back wall. It is the belief of the Texas Historic Commission, and it is explained here, that it's the front facade that you want to protect, and it's always been okay to add on to a historic building, it's just in the manner that you do it. So, I hope that will answer the concerns... perhaps it was Councilman Parsons that brought those to me. I hope that will answer the concerns. This comes from the Texas Historic Commission, and the person who signs it is the project reviewer for our area and would be in charge of looking at anything at the Opera House. I hope that that will set any of your minds at ease on that. Then another concern I have heard is that we need to cut back and not add on, because, you know, we are in times of recession. I didn't think ever that the national news would agree that we really have always stayed in recession, but now even they are saying that. In times of recession, someone needs to have the vision to create an economic boom for the community so that somehow we can dig ourselves out. If we just sit and cry, woe is me, it's not going to get any better. But we know, do not pass go, that the Opera House works in helping the economy of this city. We have heard too that it might ruin businesses if there were a concession stand inside the St. Helens building. I've been fortunate to be at the Bass Hall a lot of times and at all kinds of theaters all over the world, and each and every one of them have had a concession stand, not someplace they prepare meals, but a concession stand, and there have been restaurants and gift shops and bookstores and everything around all those theaters, and no one has seemed to have a problem with it. I don't see that that's a thing that we need to worry too much about. Another more recent concern I've heard is that perhaps we are tying too many strings to this, that there's a lot of things that we want. There is one string. It is to integrate the St. Helens building into the Granbury Opera House. That is the string. You have a letter that we addressed to Mayor Ricky Pratt that you have in your packet. We have a couple of wishes, and we certainly hope you would take those seriously. We have a lot of donors, and we want to be able to honor them in some way in the Opera House. We also think that our advisors and the members of our committees have a lot invested and to offer on the Historic Properties Board, and we would love to take a seat and work with you on that board. Those are wishes. The string is that it be integrated together. Oh, good, okay. Now, like the original restoration of the Granbury Opera House in nineteen-seventies, when the Opera House provided impetus for the revitalization of the town square, we believe this will happen again. Sales tax in nineteen-seventy was $19,000. In nineteen-seventy-six, after the Opera House had been open a year, sales tax was $100,000. Additionally, I had coffee this morning with Mayor Ken Hill. He was mayor of Granbury when the Opera House renovation was happening, and he paid all of $25,000 for his pharmacy on the square, which was in the Central Texas title Brown Walton Building. Twenty-five thousand, and he thought he was really being pleased. I don't think they're going to sell Central Texas Title and Brown Walton for $25,000 this year or any year after this, but property and values for the square in nineteen-seventy, for the entire square, including the courthouse, were $525,000. In nineteen-seventy-six, they were 1.25 million. The Opera House makes a difference to Granbury. It makes a difference in sales tax, and that helps us with the maintenance. Because of the generosity of all of these people that you see sitting here, we are so proud to announce that we have this wonderful, wonderful gift to give you. It ought to be like Christmas around here. And, we want to continue to raise money to help with the expenses of renovating not only St. Helens, but bringing much-needed tasks into the project that you committed to with the Granbury Opera House. Mr. Mayor, one of our speakers had to do counseling late tonight, but she has arrived. Would you permit her to speak?
Uh, yes.
She was doing a good thing. She was counseling.
I just wasn't aware of another guest speaker.
I'm so sorry. We didn't think she would make it.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you something?
Sure. At this time, we would probably be best to ask a few questions of you as well. Councilman Allen, go ahead.
Just one question. You said that Opera House opened in nineteen-seventy-five?
Yes, it opened in seventy-six.
Seventy-six? The taxes, you said, went from nineteen thousand to a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Just on Opera House alone?
Well, certainly not. I mean, that... you had the whole city.
Oh, okay, okay.
You've got the whole city.
Okay.
I'd like to state that I was involved in the opera company in nineteen-seventy-five.
You don't want to increase the tax.
So, I just wanted to correct you. It is nineteen-seventy-five.
It is seventy-five, yes. But in nineteen... well, I'm sorry. I've got it in my notes. The year after the Opera House opened, nineteen-seventy-six, city taxes were a hundred thousand. In nineteen-seventy, they were nineteen thousand.
What was the difference in population?
All of the three-seventy-seven didn't start until much later, but I can get the specific numbers for you if that will help.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for Ms. Southern, Council? We may call you back here in just a little bit. You have a guest you'd like to have a...
This is Jessica Grimm, and she would like to speak to you about the accessibility of the Opera House for individuals who are disabled.
Ms. Grimm, can I get you to come around the podium for me?
How do I get around the podium?
Well, see, there you go. There's an accessibility issue right there.
Thank you.
We try to be accommodating.
Right? Okay.
Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes, Ms. Jessica Grimm, and I live at 1202 Crawford Court, Granbury, Texas, 76048. And, I'm going to keep this really short, because I'm sure y'all have listened to a lot of talk by now. And, I just wanted to speak on accessibility. I got injured when I was fourteen, and my mom used to work in Granbury, and we went to the Opera House all the time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Grimm. Can I get you to spin around to where you're addressing us, please?
Oh, I didn't know.
I'd like for you to address the council, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyway, my mom used to work here, and we used to go to the Opera House all the time when I was growing up, and I got injured when I was fourteen and have not really been able to go to the Opera House since. I think accessibility is an issue. I think it's awesome that Preserve Granbury is wanting to renovate in order to have accessibility, and I think it should be an issue for everybody, not just older people, but it's an issue for tourists in general. I think it's going to become a bigger issue as time goes on, and I think it's something that's important to do now. And I would like to go see a play at the Opera House. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ann.
I really don't have much more to say, except that what we do is not only for ourselves, and it should not be, but it should be for the generations that come beyond us. The folks that did all the work in nineteen-seventy, look at how long they have impacted us. And, I think we owe it to them, and I think we owe it to the generations beyond us to do a beautiful job at the Opera House. We at Preserve Granbury and all our partner agencies want to be involved in that. We want for you to tell us, go out and keep running to the post office and getting more money. We hope that you will accept this gift in the generosity with which it has been given. Thank you.
Ms. Southern, I have a question for you, please. In the letter, you stated about the request to have the ability to name a portion of the facility and also to... a request to sit on the Board of Directors of the Granbury Historic Properties. This donation, I just want to clarify, it is not contingent upon that. That's just merely a request that was added to the letter. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is what we would like. We certainly think that donors should have some kind of recognition. They did in the beginning, and we think surely we would want to do that. We would also like to sit on that Historic Properties Board. But, the only string that is in the contract, those are requests, the only string that is in the contract is that the St. Helens building be integrated into the Granbury Opera House project.
I understand that portion of it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Pruitt, I've got a question for you. Does anybody else on council have any other questions for Ms. Southern? Ms. Pruitt, I've got a question for you, please. You had stated that the current membership of the Opera Guild is sixty-five members, but...
We have over sixty-five, but...
I seem to recall at one time it was over a thousand members. Am I wrong with that?
Maybe not a thousand, but it was over three hundred at one time.
It was over three hundred. Okay. I just wanted some clarification, because something just told me it seemed like there was a massive number of members.
We have fallen down with our membership in the last five years.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for any of these presenters? I want to mention to the council members that we have a resolution in your package. It includes language that authorizes the city manager to immediately replat the Opera House property, along with the St. Helens property, into a single plat of record and immediately incorporated into the ongoing renovation of the Opera House, along with authorizing the mayor to execute any documents relating to said transfer of property to the city. This time, I entertain a motion to accept this gift and approve the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution accepting the donation of the St. Helens building.
I'll second that.
And, approve the resolution. I take it, adopt the resolution is what you're stating?
Adopt the resolution, agreeing to make application to replat the St. Helens building and the footprint of the Opera House, agreeing to include the St. Helens building in ongoing renovation of the Granbury Opera House, and authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as necessary.
All right, we have a motion, and are you willing to second that entire motion? All right, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We will now open it up for debate. I would like to ask Scott, if you could bring up our time clock. We're going to ask that every speaker on this... this is strictly between council. We'll go for ten minutes. Every speaker has a chance to talk. Since I brought the item before us, I'll be talking first. And, Councilman Tyra, just before we get started, would you prefer to be last to speak during the first round, or would you like to follow me?
I'm going to yield my time. I'm not going to make a...
All right, thank you. All right, so if you would, start the clock for me, please. First off, I'd like to thank the contributors, and especially John and Becky Bromley. The personal donation of this matching fund, $300,000, is going to go a long way if it's approved. Sally Cleveland, the Quartz Cleveland Trust Fund, their donation is tremendous. The fact that this was all done in a period of time that was six to eight weeks speaks in itself of the community's support on this matter. The funds, if you'll notice in your packet, council members, they are readily available. We have notation that those funds are there, ready. Is there a tax impact? Yes, there might be a sales tax movement on the square, but that doesn't mean it's a loss in revenue. In fact, I anticipate that this stimulus, this local stimulus program, we talk about how can we stir the economic development in your own community. It comes from local support. Local support is what we have right here before us, council members. This is a local stimulation project to help support a 1.2 million dollar project that has been sitting on the table for some... since 2007, I believe, if not before. We've talked about it in the years past. In nineteen-eighty, it was brought up for discussion. It just wasn't a feasible thing. But what we have before us is staring us in the face to say to this community, "We don't want your tax monies to go towards this project, that we don't want your community support, your investment, your goodwill gesture," is a slap in the face of those that we have sitting out there. They are our constituents. Our purpose here on council is to provide the city with the best opportunity for the city as a whole. This is not to be a one-sided lake property owners versus the Opera House and the tourism industry. This is what's good for the community. When you look at the Opera House, when you look at people that come to the lake, they look for nightlife. You can't be out there on the lake at night. If you are, it's dangerous. We need to provide entertainment. With entertainment come the eateries, come the shoppers. With the increase in revenue and the increase in the footprint, we actually can encourage an intermission to take place in a record time at the Opera House. They used to run thirty minutes to have an Opera House intermission. If you can get the timeframe down to fifteen-minute increments just by increasing the bathroom, making it easily accessible through ingress and egress archways that are cut into the adjacent structure, you have got a win-win venue. The grandeur that is the Opera House, it's already being planned for a single footprint, but the expansion into the adjacent structure is a no-brainer. You will never see this kind of a goodwill gesture happen again in our terms because of the fact that this outpouring is a timeliness issue. We need to get things on the ground. You may ask, where are we at in the ongoing build-design structure? I've been informed that there are five steps to the build-design, build-structure issue. Construction phases are these. You have the schematic designs phase. That's phase one. You have preliminary plan. That's two. We have the design development phase. That's when they actually start looking into the architectural, the engineering, designing of the walls. We are still in phase... We are still in phase two, of which there are five phases. After the design development stage, you have the construction document phase where it's got to be put out to bid for the construction, where architects and subcontractors join hands and they come to a meeting of the minds and say, this is how we're going to proceed. You have bid negotiations. All of these steps are vital in this reconstruction phase. Is this a big project? Did it take on a new breath of fresh air by having this group come forward with a gift? By all means it has, but it's not something that we ourselves didn't put on the table back in 2011. It was talked about then. The discussion dwelt on the fact that it was $575,000 of taxpayer dollars to make this happen. We're not talking about that any longer, council members. What we're talking about is cleaning some restrooms, modifying some walls that adjoin it, make it accessible for the wheelchair people. And it's not just wheelchair people that we're talking about here. We're talking about accessibility. We are an aging society. All of us are aging. I guarantee you, I'd like to think that I'm 28, but my body, when I get out of bed, says, wake up, you're 55. We're all suffering from those aging symptoms. We have a council member that has issues going upstairs now. He utilizes the elevator. These are concerns that we all need to be addressing. We should be accommodating. We should be forthright thinking. Forward-thinking is what I expect of this council, what serves best our community as a whole. That's my time for this first round. All right. I entertain anybody that wants to speak on this matter next. Please let me know who you want to talk. Councilman Perkel, it's your time. You're going to have 10 minutes to talk on the matter, sir.
It won't take me that long, I don't believe. I moved here in 1979 to become an insurance agent. At that point, you start to look at saying, where do I want to advertise? And those of you that have been here long enough, remember the Olio. Is it not working?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Olio, for me to get on the Olio took me five years. Honestly, that's how many people. That was $32,000, one stroke, every year. The next thing was if you didn't call Thursday or Friday night to get a ticket at the Opera House, you couldn't get one. I don't care if you were a season ticket holder, if you didn't get it, you know, it was gone. We need that again. We need people coming to visit because of that. I'm a Kiwanis member, okay? About 10 years ago, I was at St. Louis at the International Convention, which is the whole world. Got off the plane, guy met me, he says, oh, I had an Opera House shirt on because of the golf tournaments. And I know all of you remember the golf tournaments that are old as I am. So he walked up and he says, hey, I'm glad, you're from Granbury? I said, yes, I am. He said, I visited my daughter in Dallas three months ago. We went to the Opera House. What I'm saying is we were known, we're known all out around, more than just in Granbury. Let me see. Another thing that we used to do, how many of you remember ushering at the Opera House? Yeah, look at the hands. Man, Friday afternoon or Saturday night, Friday night, you'd get a telephone call. We don't have enough people tomorrow. Can you come usher? We did that. There's several things that we can do as individuals. And one thing that I want to do, I want to be the one that said, I voted to do this because I think it's vital to our society, to our town. About five years ago, at one of the TML meetings, they said, you have to make either a business, your destination business, or a destination city. We were a destination city several years ago. We're not now, folks. I was at Fredericksburg probably 20 years ago, went into the candles carbon shop and says, you know, one of these in Granbury would go along real well, really would. Okay, it moved here. How many of you remember where it was on the west side of the square? It's gone now. What I'm saying is that's what needs to happen. And I hate to put a burr under the saddle of some people that have businesses on the square, but one thing you have to do is you have to get a product that people want and use and not get the same thing. And I hate to say that, but it's that way. And it's not all, but what I'm saying is we have a chance to do something that will help our community. And I get a little emotional because I think we need to make Granbury grow. And this is the only way we're going to do it. One of the few things that we can do now ourselves is, you know, $10, $20, whatever, but we need to do it. And I don't know how many of you still have a plaque on a chair in the Opera House, but I've got one.
Thank you, Councilman Perkel. Mr. Allen?
I guess I'm ready. I couldn't follow you, so. I've never been an actor and just trying to be a councilman now, but let me tell you, this is the hardest decision that I've ever made tonight. It was so bad that we have Bible study on Thursday night. Usually I request for my gout, my feet to be prayed on or prayed for, or my back, or my wife's back, but this time it was about a decision because this is a tough one. And the old saying is, nothing's free, just like Dan said about the Corvette. If he wants to give it to me, I'll take it and I'll buy the gas because I want one nearer than nins. But, you know, first of all, I want to thank the people that gave, that put it together. It's good outreach for the whole county and the city to come together at one time to do something like this. 97% to 98% of the money was brought from outside the city, which was...
And please, folks, could I have your attention again? I want to remind you, this is open microphone night. If you want to speak and listen to me, please, if you want to speak on any agenda item that is not a public hearing item, please fill out the open mic request forms. You'll find them outside on the table. That's the one with the blue header at the top. Those are the only ones I'm accepting for open mic discussion. By I, item number one is not a public hearing. I'm also going to ask you that we keep some order and decorum in the council chamber. No booing, no hissing, no clapping. Let's sit on our hands for this one, please. I don't want anybody saying we're biased one way or the other. If you want to talk about it, bring it to the podium by way of an open mic form. We'll get this meeting started here shortly. Thank you much. Oh, you can go back to talking now. Well, we appreciate everybody being here for City Council February 7th. I'll let the city secretary get back to her spot. At this time, we're going to open up our regular meeting. We're here in our city council chamber located at City Hall. Appreciate all the attendance. It's nice to see people out and about. At this time, we'll kick off the meeting with an invocation being led by Pastor Mary Carden. She's with the Brazes Covenant Ministries. And P.S., we are not taking any more open mic requests at this time. Please rise for the invocation. Mary, at the podium, please.
Father, we thank you that we know that the earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. We want to begin to thank you that Texas is largely out of drought and, Father, that you love our city and its history. And, Father, I just say, over this meeting, the Lord bless and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to us. Father, lift up your face with favor over us and give us peace. And we just ask this in the name of Jesus, who is our Prince of Peace. Amen.
And join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, please.
On my Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and individual.
Please be seated. As tonight is an open mic night, as I stated before, please consider that the council can listen to whatever you have to say. You're going to have three minutes to speak. I'll call you up to the podium. Please do not grandstand, point all of your comments towards the council. And we'll get this thing started. Scott, are you ready with the clock? We'll put a little timer up for you. And the first person I'm going to call up to the podium is Scott Young. Please state your name and your address and we'll start the timer. You have three minutes.
My name is Scott Young, 101 West Pearl. Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Council, I am the president of the Historic Granbury Merchants Association, one of the donor organizations of the Friends of the Opera House. I'd like to give you an example of philanthropy, economic development, and civic pride of which I recently have become aware. In 1998, the city of Dallas determined the need for five new bridges to cross the Trinity River, connecting downtown Dallas and North Oak Cliff, a blighted area, not very inviting to developers or to revitalization. The city could have planned five wide concrete expanses which would deliver traffic from one side of the river to the other. Instead, forward-thinking city staff and civic leaders decided to turn this transit necessity into an asset. The city sought out and received a private sector donation of 15 million to change the concept from large concrete expansions to sculptural statement bridges designed by a world-class architect and engineer. Was an artistic sculptural bridge necessary to move traffic? Of course not. But a forward-thinking city is now much more moving than just traffic. They have created an economic engine as well as finding a solution to traffic problems. The first of these bridges is completed and the Margaret Hunt Hill Calatrava Bridge will open in March. While the bridge was being built, there's been an explosion of construction, redevelopment, and improvements on the Oak Cliff side of the bridge. This is truly a story of build it and they will come, and they have come. Dallas and many Texas cities have the vision to see beyond the what is and see the possibilities that could be. We live in a city blessed with generous and giving people. We have an opportunity to become the regional destination theater of North Texas and probably beyond. An outstanding facility in any venue is the dream of most cities, especially cities our size. Citizens of Granbury have banded together to continue the Opera House dream that was the initial economic boost that attracted many investors and businesses. A gift of the magnitude of the Friends of the Opera House is very rare indeed in a community of our size. Cooperation between public and private sectors is what we all say is needed, and here it is, a chance to create an incredible multi-use venue. Gentlemen, this is a no-brainer. Please accept this generous gift.
Thank you, sir. I have somebody who put on here that they live at 106 North Crockett. I don't have a name, but you're up. If you don't respond to your address, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry about that. My name is Heather Cleveland. I've owned and operated the Panhandle at 106 North Crockett for 18 years. I was asked to speak tonight on the perspective of the merchants and what the Opera House means to those of us who do business on the square. Nobody comes to Granbury for just one thing. They come for an experience, a package, and the Opera House is very much a part of that package. And it has a direct impact whether it's operating and being managed properly in a properly maintained facility. It has an impact on the amount of business that we do on the square. I'm open late every Friday and Saturday night and have been for 17 years. And I can tell you, if that Opera House is running, then we are busy right up until it's time for the folks to go to the show. It matters and it has a direct economic impact on me and on every other business on that square, which then in turn has a direct impact on tax revenues and further business for Granbury in general. So I would encourage you to accept this gift. And I also feel like when you have a community that rises to the occasion and comes up with the show of support that this community has come up with, that to refuse a gift is almost insulting. So I encourage you to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll hear from Linda Preston. State your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, please.
Linda Preston, 118 North Houston Street. Mayor Pratt, Mayor Pro Tim Parson, Councilman Perkel, Councilman Tyra, Councilman Allen, Councilman Hewlett. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on one of my favorite subjects, our prized town square. I have lived and worked on the town square for 32 and a half years. From a merchant's point of view, I have been here during the lucrative years as well as the lean years. I have learned the tourism business from the ground up, having served as president of the Merchants Association twice, the Historic Preservation Committee, the Board of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce Board, Preserve Granbury, and as a volunteer for many other projects relating to the town square. What I have learned about tourism is pretty simple. Tourism is a clean industry that enriches our community professionally and monetarily. People come to our community, spend their money on food, entertainment, and shopping. They go home afterwards and use their own water in city services. It is a clean industry and provides our community with the best of both worlds. What I know for sure is that tourism is a fickle business. It is dependent on the weather, the price of gas, the overall economy, and who is hot and who is not, usually determined by advertising. What is constant and does not change is local support. John and Becky Brumley have generously provided our community with $300,000 toward the purchase of the St. Helens Building and a challenge to match those funds from within our community. They believe, as I do, that this valuable space will make the revitalization of the Opera House even more spectacular. Sally Cleveland, also a member of our community, has given a significant amount toward making this dream come true. She has stressed to our committee how dearly her late husband Quartz Cleveland loved the town square and especially the Opera House, and she dedicates her contribution in his honor. Charles and Dominique Inge have supported the arts in Granbury for many years. They have acted as advisors to preserve Granbury. They have rallied around the Langdon Center and have always been gracious and quick to share their knowledge and experience. It was a lucky day for Granbury when they decided to make Granbury their home. They also offered generous support to this project. I think that you can see from the atti- I think that you can see from the attendance tonight that that support for the purchase of St. Helens does not end with these three people. We have been touched by the support of the community, each giving what they could and offering Preserve Granberry and Friends of the Opera House encouragement and enthusiasm. These sheer numbers offer the affirmation that will translate into season ticket holders. This will provide that community support that I spoke about earlier. And when the outlying areas realize what a jewel we have in our new director, Andrew Barris, and the beauty of our new facility, the tourists and the buses will return. As Darryl Royal used to say back in my days at the University of Texas, "I ask you to dance with those that brung us." Please accept this generous gift in the spirit that it is given. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. As you could tell, I sort of let her wrap stuff up, so we're not holding strictly to the three-minute guideline. I do request that you try to keep it within three minutes. Mr. J.C. Campbell, if you would, please. Do me a favor and tap on that microphone to kick it into gear. Rick, are you here? Just swap him out for me, Rick, please.
Okay, I'll go ahead. My name is J.C. Campbell. I live at 2222 Acton Road. I do not live in the city, but the city of Granberry and Hood County is very important to me. In 1960, my wife and I moved to Granberry. We went to Weatherford, we went to Cleburne, we went to Burleson, we went to a number of different towns, but nothing like Granberry, nothing that these other towns had offered what Granberry did. Now, true, my wife is from Granberry. She was raised, went to school here, so that was a... She didn't want to move back, because she was raised here. But anyway, I didn't want to raise our kids in Fort Worth, or Irving, or Dallas, which is where I'm from. But we came to Granberry because of what it had to offer. Just my luck. I know, I've been to where you guys are sitting up here before, and I know what's going through your mind, but one thing I'd like to ask you to do is to... Is to remember that when you ran for office and you were elected, that the citizens of Granberry elected you to do what they think should be done for the city of Granberry. And I'd like to emphasize that each one of you have your ideas about it. That's great. But what you need to do is you need to put first and foremost what the city of Granberry is going to be best served by, because it is you that make the decision. You're the ones that lead the pack, that tell us this is what we need to do. And so I just ask that whenever we take this vote tonight, that you as a council, and the mayor and the council, all do this unanimously. This is something that needs to be done. It's not done for today or tomorrow. It's done for 10, or 15, or 25, or 50 years down the road. This is something that is very vital to the citizens of Granberry and also to Hood County, because to me, whenever I think of Hood County, I think of Granberry, and the same vice versa. But I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk, and I would ask for your vote on this to be unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I'm going to invite Karen Roberts up to the podium. Karen?
Hello, I'm Karen Roberts at 220 Rent's Place Circle in Weatherford. I work here in Granberry as a Realtor.
Scott, do me a favor and... I'm sorry. Scott, would you reset the clock for...
Okay. Now we have 10 minutes, 10 seconds. I work as a Realtor here, and I was drawn here to work here because of the beauty of the square and the lake. So while you're talking about preserving your square and the beauty of the buildings there and the fun things to do down there, I want to also think about the lake and suggest that if there's some way of limiting the sale of water during the winter, I mean, just keep it at the winter months and let us have the lake as much as we can during the spring and summer, that will help property values and draw people to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, I invite Mayor David Southern. State your name and address, and we'll start the clock.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. David Southern, 226 East Pearl. I'd like to thank the mayor and the council and the management for allowing me to speak tonight. Like J.C., I moved here 20 years later, in 1980, and we picked Granberry because we thought it'd be a great place to raise our kids, and it has been. And now our grandkids are being raised here. And I wanted to say that I wanted to speak tonight in favor of the donation of the St. Helens Building to the city for expansion of the Granberry Opera House. Shortly after the city acquired the Opera House, I attended a historic theater conference about restoration and tax credit programs for which they qualify. Several architects spoke. Without exception, they all agreed that space in any theater should be divided to 1/3 in the lobby, 1/3 in the audience area, and 1/3 for the stage and the backstage. The addition of the St. Helens Building gives you this opportunity without the need for much deconstruction of the existing indoor elements, and not only speeds up the construction time in my mind, but also reduces the amount of addition to the rear of the building. Although the interior elements of the Opera House are not original, they do represent contributions over almost 40 years of the community at large and the original organizers of the Granberry Opera House. Having traveled across the state and nation to historic cities, the comment I received time after time when people found out that I was from Granberry was the difference we had in historic restoration in our merchants' area was that we offered a venue for live theater, and that was done through the Granberry Opera House. When I first elected, it was first elected, the city council in 1985, the council had just voted as the request of the chamber to increase the bed tax from 4% to 7% in order to form a visitors bureau at the chamber. I was appointed to be the city's representative on the tourism advisory board at the chamber. One of the first requests for funds to the board came from Joanne Miller of the Granberry Opera House because ticket sales were not enough and the philanthropy that came at the beginning of the Opera House was decreasing. Not since that time until I've seen a group that has raised so much money in this community in so short a time for any project than this group has done. In fact, I was surprised that they raised the money, much less the time period that they did it in. This group seems dedicated to continuing a level of giving that will sustain the Opera House well into the future. I know as elective representatives of the citizens of Granberry, you want to do what is in the city's best interest. A little over a decade ago, the city decided to build this city hall. During the planning and construction of the building, we were all in tonight. There were all sorts of complaints about the cost and the size. Comments were made calling it the Southern Palace and even King David's Palace. However, when it opened, almost 10, it'd be 10 years ago this fall, the criticism stopped, and everyone began to talk about how visionary the council had been. A crowd this size that we have here tonight could not have been accommodated in our old council chambers, and this building has received architectural awards and praise from almost anyone who has seen or been within its halls. The council who authorized it is remembered as a visionary council when it came to moving forward on its construction at a time when others might not have. I believe the acceptance and use of the St. Helens Building along with the rebuilding of the Granberry Opera House will be viewed someday as a similar visionary moment for the current city council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I'm going to invite Sylvia Hickey to the microphone, please. Sylvia?
Mayor, Councilman. I was raised in a small but progressive Texas town, oh, sorry, 6309 Blackfoot.
Thank you, ma'am.
I was raised in a small, progressive Texas town, and I was raised to be part of that community and support that community. And because of that, that's the way I go forward in this community. Our slogan in that town was Shop Gram, Keep Your Money at Home. Due to this background, I was right at home when Mike and I decided to start Add One and Print One, and helping others to successfully advertise their businesses really came natural. When the Lord dropped me here in Granberry and said, "Check this place out," again, it was a natural fit. And as we expanded into publishing the Granberry Showcase Magazine, it was a perfect way to learn more about my county and my city, my community, and call this place home. Today, we're thankful to be in the center of events, activities, and the growth of this city. We delivered the Showcase Magazine monthly for 10 years on our own because we decided this puts us in the place where we can be abreast of the successes and the failures. We can be in the middle of the ups and the downs. We can see the booms and the busts and know how the community is doing. Our goal through the magazine is to keep business here, to make business thrive, to educate people about what is here and what they can do and not have to go someplace else. Granberry is like no other place I've ever been. The Granberry history, building of the lake, someone's idea of it being a retirement place which has brought us a mix of old-timers and newcomers make us stand alone. This brings me to a question that I hope you will answer. How many of you on the council have lived here in Granberry for 20 years? Raise your hand. How many of you have lived here 15 years? How many have lived here 10 years?
Just so you're aware, we're not able to respond to you.
My point is, you know in your heart though, my point is that if you haven't lived here at least 15 years, you haven't seen the square and the Opera House at its peak. I've heard stories of retailers who, on a weekend, couldn't come out from behind the counter to say, "May I help you?" Because it was so busy in their stores, all they had time to do was to ring the cash register. And what would make it like that? Why would there be so many customers shopping? They had come to the Opera House, and they were either before or after the show, shopping and dining, and at that time, the house was full. Think about it. That's 600 people on Friday, 600 people on Saturday, and 300 people on Sunday, and that's what I call success for a city. My last statement is, build it, and they will come to see your shows, to dine in your restaurants, to shop in your shops, to fill their cars with your gas, to stay in your accommodations. The combination of the Opera House building and the St. Helens building can only make the crown jewel return our city to prominence in tourism. We will again be the city that other cities try to copy, and our businesses will again be in the good times. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Joan Snyder. I hope I pronounced that correctly. State your name, your address, and we'll start the clock.
Joan Snyder, 2400 Teal Place. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm a neighbor to many of you. I've lived in Granberry since 1990. I've raised my two children here. Like many others, I moved here to raise my family. It's been, Granberry's been good to me. I have a son who's now a Boeing engineer in Seattle on the 777 as an aerospace engineer. I have a daughter who's a junior at TCU, Go Frogs. But what I'd like to say to you is, I've been tax-paying, voting city resident since 1990. I am in support of the acceptance of the St. Helens Building. Over the years, I have quietly given money to many organizations in Hood County. Standing here, I am not just expressing my opinion, but back up my thoughts with volunteerism and financial support. In 2000, I proudly became a charter member of the Granberry Opera House Millennium Club. Carrying citizens joined together in the year 2000 to form this club to support the Opera House. Over a three-year time period, 93,000 was donated by generous citizens at $1,000 each. I would like to show the plaque that I received for my donation. 12 years later, most of the Millennium Clubs have given donations to purchase the St. Helens Building because we still care about our beloved Opera House. As councilmen, you have the opportunity tonight to impact our historic square and tourism. History will look back at your positive vote and show your true leadership and your vision for the future. If the St. Helens proposition is turned down, I believe that donations and attendance to the Opera House in the future will be negatively impacted. As an individual, I cannot make that decision for you, but I can control who I vote for, what businesses I patronize, and what contributions I make. I would like all the city residents in favor of the St. Helens donations to please quietly stand and join me to show your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. While you're standing, I'll invite Gary Couch up to the microphone. Once again, state your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, sir.
My name is Gary Couch. I live at 1903 Hubble Lake Drive. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers, for this opportunity. This is an exciting night for the city of Granberry. In less than eight short weeks, an unprecedented $600,000 has been donated for the expansion of the Opera House. The donations have ranged from $25 to $300,000. This is certainly one for the record books. This generosity has come from residents of the city, the county, and even the metroplex. Even though St. Helens is a city project, the Opera House charm and appeal is far-reaching, serving a 100-mile radius. The benefits from St. Helens' expansion will benefit our local community, both from increased sales tax revenues, increased sales for our local merchants, and enriching our cultural district. I recently purchased Lodge of Granberry, and I'm in the process of transitioning from a hotel to an upscale lakefront community. We are having great success and interest in both leasing and selling our newly renovated condominiums. We are trying to provide not just a nice apartment or condo, but a lifestyle. This lifestyle includes lounging at the lakefront pool, having coffee on your balcony, and a short walk to the square for shopping and afternoon lunch. My decision to make this investment was based on the direction the downtown area would take. Even though there were those that said, "It is too risky. Play it safe. Be content with what you have." I followed my gut and my deep belief in this community, and I moved forward with the best decision of my career. I believe we are at the beginning stages of a rebirth to our square, and the Opera House is at the absolute center. The merchant success on and off the square is directly related to the success of the Opera House. The St. Helens Building addition will increase the chances for that success. It will provide restrooms on the square and a visitor's center. The visitor's center will be able to link customers with businesses, hotels, restaurants, entertainment, apartments, and many other services. St. Helens will also provide additional revenue sources to the city. I will gladly pay for the opportunity to advertise on a video kiosk in the visitor's center. This is just one example of potential revenue. This is just one example of potential revenue. The St. Helens addition also allows for the growth of not just the theater, but our entire community. The anticipated population for Hood County in 2020 is projected to be 70,000, a 40% increase from 2010. The city population is expected to reach 12,000. It is vitally important that the decision you make, will make tonight, is based on that growth. Even though this has been a contentious issue and process, it was the right process, and it has made this night so worth it. I thank this council for the towns they put forth. For if it had not been for such strong concerns about the cost to taxpayers by councilmembers, these donations and overwhelming support would have never been realized. The enthusiasm that has reached all over this county would never have been created. And the sense of community gained from this experience would never have been enjoyed. The most valuable asset a city can have is to have citizens that are willing to donate their time and money for the greater good of their community. I ask you to please recognize that you represent such a community. I believe this decision you will make tonight will be one of the most important decisions you will make as city council members. This decision will take this community on two very different paths. It will be a path of opening a door that encourages community involvement in donating their time and money, both for this project and future projects, or it will be a path that closes that door for a very long time. The question tonight is no longer, "What is the cost to the city if you accept this donation?" But rather, "What is the cost to the city if you do not?" Councilman Parson, Councilman Allen, Councilman Tyra, Mayor Pratt, Councilman Perkel, Councilman Hewitt. Please do not let this rare opportunity pass you by. Bring this community together by encouraging citizens to get involved by giving back and paint a clear, bright future for Granbury by voting unanimously to accept this generous gift. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'd like to invite the final speaker that signed up for open mic. That is Mr. Jack Williams. State your name, your address, and we'll start the clock, sir.
My name is Jack Williams. My address is 5311 Mission Circle. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as president of the Granbury Brigade, I am happy to report to you that we did contribute to the purchase of the St. Helens Building in the hope that this city council would accept such a magnificent $600,000 gift. We think it's a very worthy business transaction. We think that the purchase of that building will enhance the Opera House by providing additional entrance into the theater and by providing decent bathrooms for the ladies. Every lady in this room will agree with me.
I wasn't expecting a comedy routine, sir. But carry on.
Yes, sir. The Brigade is a volunteer organization, and we stand ready to support Mr. Andrew Barris in his endeavors. We like Andrew Barris. As a matter of fact, we have already supported him in endeavors. We ask that you support this request. We think it's worthwhile, and we pray that you will approve it. Mr. Mayor, this concludes my remarks. I want to thank you, sir, and your committee or your council for allowing me to speak and express our position. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. That moves us off of open-mic night. We are now going to take up the consent agenda. First up under the consent agenda, we have the January 3rd minutes to consider, along with the January 17th minutes. You will have found them in your packet information, councilmembers. I understand that Mr. Parson has a statement he would like to reflect as to the January 3rd minutes. Mr. Parson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the January 3rd meeting, in item number 12-11, in which we were asked to consider and approve an ordinance abolishing the Tourism Advisory Board, Mr. Tyra presented that item. And in his discussion about that, he said that he had a really good reason to abolish that board, but he couldn't discuss it that night. I would like the minutes to reflect that statement. If there's any future events that come up, that needs to be in there, that the rest of the council might not have had information that they needed to make decisions about that.
State your language again, sir, that you're wanting to add the language.
Mr. Tyra said he had a really good reason to abolish that board, but he couldn't discuss it that night.
Mayor, I'd like to clarify.
Give me just a second, please.
And I think this can be resolved pretty easy, Mayor.
I'm just trying to get his language right. And you're saying, just for clarification, you're saying nowhere in the minutes did you find that?
It wasn't noted in the minutes, and I thought it was pretty germane to the conversation and to the motion or to the resolution.
All right.
Mayor, since the fellow councilman's trying to change the language that I stated, I would like to make sure we do this the correct way because what he just stated was actually out of context to what I said. So I would like to table these minutes until the city secretary go back and get us a recording of that. And she knows, like she's done for us before, when there's a question about fact, we go back to the recording, and I'd like to hear that as well because we talked about that situation. I said I wouldn't say anything negative. And so there were certain things that I was not going to say, but I did say several items as far as my decision-making that night and why I was trying to do what I was trying to do. But yes, there was a statement, and Mickey was close, but it was out of context because there were certain things that I stated I would not talk about because they were negative. And that's the context it was set in, so I'd like to.
Thank you, sir.
Put this on the table where we can get it right.
In response to that, I would entertain a motion to postpone the consent item regarding the January 3rd minutes. Until such time that the secretary can bring us back verbatim language regarding item number 12-011.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tyra, a second by Mr. Parson. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. That'll bring us down to item, January 17th minutes. I would like to point out that I noted a request for a change in language in item number If you look at the bottom of the page where 12-014 occurs, in the bottom section, it states the city manager stated the estimates for upgrading this property to comply with code are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years. I think that that may not be the best statement. When I was brought into my understanding regarding any improvements or estimates regarding repairs to the property, it was not to bring them into code, but to just do some repairs on the property. I would suggest that we change that to read that the city manager stated the estimates for repairs of the property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years.
Mayor, is that, are the buildings up to code? I know we had a discussion one time before with Scott, if they were.
There are none that we are aware of at this time that are not to code. That's why I.
Well, the, no, that's not true. It's not true.
Then I want some clarification as to whether or not all of the property needs $225,000 to bring it up to code.
I don't think it takes the whole amount, but I do remember Scott saying there was some stuff that had to be done.
And the chimney was the situation.
The separation of the chimney and the house.
Chimney was fixed to fall. I mean, there was a question about it going to fall or not.
There's a, you put your hands between.
Once again, my question is, does that entail spending $225,000 to bring the property to code?
No, some of the 25,000.
Some of it. I just want some clarification that repairs of the property are approximately $225,000.
I've never seen a written estimate on any of the repairs.
Nor have any of us. We saw a building inspector who inspected the property gave us an approximation of 225, 250. But I just want to talk about the language that we have before us.
Mayor, what do you don't like about the language?
Because it states that the entire, for upgrading this property to comply with code are approximately $225,000. My point is, it's not $225,000 to bring it up to code. There are some repairs and maintenance. I think the word "code" needs to be taken out of it. As I stated, I would like to strike the portion that says, "Upgrading the property to comply with code." Change it to read, "Estimates for repairs of the property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years."
Well, here's my question.
Just for clarification.
Well, but if that wasn't said, then you shouldn't change it. If that was stated right there, then it should be what it was stated. That's what minutes are about. If that was stated in this meeting at that date, then we should leave it alone. I mean, I hear what you're saying. You're wanting to clean it up after the fact, but I don't see how that would be proper if that's what was stated that night.
Because the intent of the language, I think it was just a misspeak.
From you or from our city manager?
From the city manager.
Mayor, let me ask you this. Are we going to bring it up to code?
Yes, this is going to be the first thing we do.
If you're going to bring it up to code, I agree with what you're saying. The whole 225 shouldn't be up to code, but maybe a different way of wording is that.
What did we say? Estimates for upgrading this property are approximately $225,000 spread over a number of years, including work to bring it up to code.
Now, you put "including," that takes care of both of them.
I'm fine with that. I just don't want it to read that it's going to take 225 to bring it up to code because we know that's not the fact. All right, so any other changes or amendments to the minutes? City secretary, did you understand that change of language? Not all.
I'll work with you on it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other changes? All in favor of the consent agenda item regarding the January 17th minutes? I do need a motion to accept the minutes as amended, please.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Hewitt, a second by Mr. Allen. Any other discussion regarding it? All in favor of making a motion to approve the minutes as amended, please say aye. And those opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to item number one. Consider and approve a resolution accepting the donation of the St. Helens Building, agreeing to make application to replat the St. Helens Building into the footprint of the Opera House property, agreeing to include the St. Helens Building in ongoing renovations of the Granbury Opera House, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of this property. Councilmembers, I brought this to the agenda after having received a request by some parties that were involved in the donation. At this time, I'd like to invite those parties to speak at the podium. First up, I'd like to call Claudia Southern. And just for an overview as to what's going to take place, we are going to invite the speakers to the podium. We will hear from them, councilmembers. While that speaker is at the podium, you may ask them a question regarding anything they might state or any questions you might have of them. After they sit back down, and we've heard from all four, by the way, there are four speakers that we will call upon, you will then have an opportunity for discussion with any of them if you so feel the need to follow up with follow-up questions after hearing from them, and then we'll move on to motion debate. Ms. Southern, if you would, please. State your name and your address for the record, please, and your association, please.
Hello, my name is Claudia Southern. I live at 226 East Pearl. I am president of Preserve Granbury and have been the chairman of this drive with five other community organizations to bring to you a most magnificent gift. I want to introduce to you two individuals that have directly been involved in presenting a great amount of money to this particular fundraising event. You have in your packets a third from the Brumleys, who wrote a letter, and I hope that you have it in your packet where you may read it. Mr. Brumley had to have surgery.
I think that's Mr. Inge.
Inge, excuse me. Mr. Inge had to have surgery yesterday and cannot be here tonight, so his letter represents him. First, I want to introduce to you John Brumley. It is John and Becky Brumley of Hood County who gave us $300,000 and a challenge to raise another $300,000 in order to purchase the St. Helens Building.
Mr. Brumley, do me a favor. State your name, your address, and the foundation that you represent, please, sir.
Sir, I'm John Brumley, 2901 Temple Hall Highway. We've lived here for about seven years. This is my wife Becky, and that's who I'm representing, Becky and myself.
Very, very good, sir. That will be good when you get home.
Mr. Mayor and the city council, I want to thank you for this opportunity of being here tonight. Thank all these wonderful people that have come out and pledged their support to the acquisition of St. Helens. I'm a businessman, just like you are, and I understand that some of you are concerned about the acquisition and the integration of St. Helens as may perhaps being unnecessary, perhaps may even lose money. And I want to say to you, it's not unnecessary, but occasionally these things lose money. And you can't get around that in the arts, and that's part of it. But we can do things with an advocacy group like this to overcome that. And that's what we'll do. If you look at the Fort Worth rodeo, that doesn't make money. The only reason that makes money is because the advocates buy the boxers, and they buy tickets to every one of them, every rodeo performance, and then therefore, if it's not doing well, you raise the ticket price, and the box is the advocacy group, and it makes money. Bass performance hall, it doesn't make money every year, but you have advocacy groups that support it. And you've got an advocacy group right here that you can't believe that's going to make this thing thrive. And I think that's the most important thing that we have right now, is advocacy in Granbury. That's why it's the wonderful city that it is. All these people, you know, when I came and talked to you, we thought it's going to take a year to raise that money. I asked you to set out a cycle. You said, "No, we can't set out a cycle." We didn't have to set out a cycle. All these people got to work and they raised this money in eight weeks. I mean, literally unbelievable. So as a board, I think one of your responsibilities is to help with this advocacy group, to help them do what they need to do and be a part of that. I mean, I think that's what all of us need to do. That's what Becky and I are trying to do. So that's what we're looking at tonight. And then I think we need to broaden our scope of what this can become. I talked to you a little bit about the first time, about a lecture series. Well, I'm not going to let go of that. I mean, I think we need a lecture series in Granbury, Texas. I think that's pretty cool. You know, I'm on the board of MD Anderson. MD Anderson is the finest medical research institute in the world. Has over 100,000 patients. You know, they do great things right now with stem cell research. They do great things with genetic profiling. And we need to get those people up here to Granbury, Texas to tell us about it. I think that would really be fun. Becky and I would sponsor that. It wouldn't cost a thing. You know, we would sponsor that. We may or may not, you may or may not want to charge for a ticket. I mean, that would be up to you. But I think you sell those 600, if you sell them for a dollar, $2, people would be wanting to come. People come from Dallas. People come from Fort Worth. You know, all of a sudden, you're creating a buzz. I think things like nuclear nonproliferation, have somebody from, you know, one of these great universities. have somebody from, you know, one of these great universities that we have, come and talk to us about what's going on in Iran, what's going on in Pakistan, you know, what's going on in North Korea. I mean, you can go on and on. I mean, and you will have ideas that I would never have. But I think it broadens this whole hori- horizon of what this can become, and you create a buzz. I mean, it's, it's, it becomes the Granbury Buzz. And now you, you read about it then in Texas Monthly. And, you know, towns that have buzzes now are like Albany and the Fandango, and they've got a great square. I mean, we need that. I mean, we, we can do that same thing. You know, our shops can be as good as a Salado shop. There's no reason our shops shouldn't be, ever be at as good as what they have, or Fredericksburg, or Curville. I mean, we've become our own buzz. You know, we've got this fantastic lake, we've got this fantastic square, you know, it, and so when Becky and I thought of doing this, I mean, we became tremendously excited. That, the only thing that, we, we didn't want to be out front on this deal. Now, we thought we would do this anonymously. And, and we told Joey that. I said, you know, Joey, keep this quiet. Don't, don't tell anyone. We talked to him. Hey, Joey kept it quiet. But little did we know that the mayor set us up in a, in a public forum meeting. I mean, we hadn't, not the slightest idea of it. And it's not your fault, Mayor. We should've figured this out before we got there. But, all of a sudden, we were at a public forum, and we thought we were secret. Uh, but I think that if we can retain that original footprint of the Opera House, and then integrate the other thing with St. Helen's, we're gonna really have something. And that's what excited Becky and me. I mean, and, and this group of people, we would've never gotten to know, if, like we have gotten to know them, if this hasn't happened. I think the process has been good. Uh, I appreciate the opportunity for this process. I've enjoyed helping raise a little bit of the money on the side, you know. I only made four phone calls, three of them gave. I mean, you know, that's pretty good. But, I, I appreciate you. Uh, I appreciate what you've done, what you've gone through. Uh, I hope you vote for this. Uh, Becky and I pledged, you know, our support. Let, let me tell you one other thing about Becky. She came in here late today, but, so she doesn't know I'm gonna say this, but in Fort Worth, Texas, every elementary school student in the first or second grade goes to Bass Performance Hall, and they hear Peter and the Wolf. And to all those schools that are poor, where the parents can't buy books, Becky furnishes the books. And so they go to Peter and the Wolf. They have all these yellow school buses up and down Main Street, you know, at least once a week. Well, let's get Becky to do that here.
(laughing)
There's no reason she can't do that here. And, and that's what we want. That's really what we want, isn't it? Thank you.
Council members, council members, do you have any questions for Mr. Brumley?
Claudia's done.
Uh, I'm, Mr. Brumley is, is done, and I'm asking if you have any questions for Mr. Brumley at this time. Well, we can call him back up if you have some later.
Well, I didn't know if, if Claudia was done speaking yet.
No, she's going to introduce the next, next guest. This isn't the last of them.
Mr. Brumley, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. Uh, can, you talked about the, uh, the, uh, expansion with the St. Helen's Building. Can you do all that with the existing footprint?
Of the expansion, of what we've seen?
No, no, no. Can you do everything that you talked about, just with the present footprint, with the little, with just the footprint of the Opera House without the St. Helen's Building?
I don't think so. I don't think you can. I mean, they, I don't, I don't, I don't want to be argumentative, but I think-
No, no, I don't want you to.
I, I think keeping the footprint exactly the same as it was, without adding bathrooms, without taking part of the balcony, I think those things are important. So, no, I think that it needs to be integrated and do the things that we talked about.
Any other questions, or Mr. Brumley? Alright. Mr. Allen here.
Are you saying that you would, uh, want to not add on to what we've got right now? Just use the footprint like it got designed?
I would keep the historic footprint of the Opera House as much like it is as I possibly can, and, and, but to improve on it. And then I would put all the restrooms, the other facilities in St. Helen's. I mean, that, that's the way I would do it. But, but I would build, you know, I would do what has been proposed by this group of people.
But the way it's designed now, we can get more seats in it than the way it is right now. So, you're saying we don't need-
Perhaps, but I want, but I want it to keep as historically as I can, to what the original footprint was.
So, seats is not really a, a progress, what you're saying?
Well, I mean, I mean, they always are somewhere.
You hope it is, anyway.
That'd be a problem, I think. I think the historical-
I'd, I'd like to remind, uh, council that he's not really an architect. He's here as a, a donor to the project. And, so, asking him about architectural aspects of the venue may not be appropriate, councilman.
No, Mayor, but he's wanted to throw this stuff up.
Better answer it off.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Southern, you're invited back up.
Sally Cleveland is larger than I. I have loved her, uh, from the first moment I saw her in the, in the early eighties, and, uh, she has inspired me forever, and still does. However, her health is not really good right now. And so she is being represented tonight by, uh, Mr. Dan White. He is the executor of Quartz Estate, and also, he handles, uh, financial affairs for Sally. Dan?
Mr. White, if you would, please state your name and, uh, your address, as well as mentioning the foundation or trust that you serve, sir.
My name is Dan White. I live at 8803 Belchase Road, and I'm representing Sally Cleveland in the Quartz Cleveland Estate. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you this evening. And as trustee for the Quartz and Sally Cleveland Estate, I'm here on behalf of Sally to offer comments and strong support of the City of Granbury's acceptance of the St. Helen's Building, along with the additional excess funds to be integrated into the existing Opera House plans. Through the generosity and vision of John and Becky Brumley, the hard work and leadership of Preserve Granbury, and the generous outpouring of community support that we've seen with this project, the stars have literally lined up for the City of Granbury to have an opportunity the type of which rarely ever comes along. Since I'm here on behalf of the Cleveland's, I'd like to share something with you that Quartz once told me. Years ago, I was considering the purchase of some adjacent ranch land, and I asked Quartz what he thought about. And after going through all the finer points and the details and the specifics, Quartz just sat back, and with that smile of his, he said, "You know, my daddy always told me, 'Son, the only land I ever wanted was my neighbor's.'" In s- in simple business terms, anytime your neighbor's land becomes available, you better take a hard look at it, because whether you realize it or not, it has strategic value to you. The St. Helen's B- Building is certainly of strategic value to the Granbury Opera House, and the window of opportunity is now open. It's worth emphasizing again, the St. Helen's Building is being offered as a gift. Funds are already on deposit in the bank and ready to go. Contrary to rumor, this gift is not a maybe type of pledge, nor is the city being asked to purchase the building. It's being offered as a gift, with the condition that it be integrated into the Granbury Opera House, already owned by the, by the city. Acceptance of this gift is not forcing the city to enter a new business line. That decision was already made when the city took over the opera, and it was later reaffirmed by the one-point-two-five-million-dollar approval to renovate the existing opera facility. To use an analogy, to not accept this gift would be like someone being offered a free Corvette and not taking it because they didn't want to buy gasoline. In difficult economic times, such public-private sector partnerships are all the more important for governmental entities such as the City of Granbury to pursue, and are becoming more commonplace across the nation. As a matter of fact, municipal ownership of historic facilities is also, uh, more and more common across the United States. The St. Helen's Building accept- acceptance will set, will exemplify such public-private cooperative partnerships. And in my twenty years of living in Granbury, I, I cannot recall such a groundswell of enthusiasm and outpouring of community support for any project such as this one. With a proposal now up for your consideration, you have a neat, a unique opportunity to acquire this strategic property through private donations. As I said earlier, the stars really have lined up for Granbury. This chance to integrate two historic properties, thus greatly enhancing the long-term operation and viability of the Opera House, is unprecedented and will likely never come again, especially since funds are now available and the upcoming renovation can very easily be modified. Utilizing the additional ninety-five-thousand dollars now being offered, along with the building, such modifications should pose minimal, if any additional, cost to the city. The most cost-effective time to combine these two buildings is clearly now, before the renovation, not afterwards. Many tangible benefits will result from this project. I would like to touch on just a few of them. The first is better access for individuals like me with physical disabilities. From a personal standpoint, I stopped wanting to go to the opera years ago because of the cramped lobby and difficult restroom access. For folks with balance issues, a larger lobby will certainly make, make for a much easier environment to physically navigate, especially during the intermissions. Everyone is getting older, and unfortunately, more and more folks will be facing physical challenges. That's a fact of life. I firmly believe that the inclusion of the St. Helen's Building will draw more folks like myself back to the opera and attract many new patrons. Secondly, in the event of a fire or other emergency, while the current plans do meet code, the St. Helen's addition will add tremendous safety benefits beyond just the minimum, such as enhanced egress to minimize the chance of a stampede. An improved concession stand will streamline the intermission process, reducing time between acts. The intent is not meal service, rather drinks and light snacks to enhance the intermission, which by the way, will be a much more enjoyable experience in a more spacious setting. As the customer base expands, this will only benefit local restaurants, not detract from them. Perhaps nearby establishments would benefit significantly from it simply adjusting their schedules to attract the opera crowd for before or after-performance meals or refreshments, not just campaigning against the opera facility, in hopes of driving a frustrated patron into their establishment for relief and repose. Volunteers stand ready to operate such a first-class concession stand, thus adding an amenity to the Opera House for very little cost. In terms of city tax revenue lost, St. Helen's is accepted, that figure is only about thirteen-hundred dollars. Sales tax won't really be lost, as I'm told, that the current owners plan to relocate their business, uh, at the square. Furthermore, for many of us, the Opera House is our first recollection of having visited Granbury. A first-class facility will ultimately attract new residents to Hood County. Should only one or two of those folks eventually relocate and build in Granbury after a pleasant weekend visit, as I once did, any impact to the local tax base will be more than offset. And by the way, it'll be far more than one or two or three relocations as a result, particularly if this project is approached correctly with vision and leadership. Success breeds success. A nice facility will not only attract more patrons, but better performers. If properly managed and promoted, we can easily expect opera revenues to increase. Very little cost will be added by accepting the St. Helen's Building due to economies of scale. In general, the same maintenance will simply be provided over a larger space. While current operations are not profitable on a standalone basis, the very small incremental cost of accepting this building donation will yield a very high incremental rate of return for the Opera House. In simple terms, you now have the opportunity to invest a very small amount to make the Opera House a much more appealing and user-friendly facility. Please do not miss this golden opportunity. As evidenced by strong community support, particularly in a weak economy, your saying no to this project could have a very negative consequence in terms of future community spirit and willingness to get behind such cooperative projects between the public and private sectors in Granbury. No one wants to be in the undesirable position, ten years down the road, of wishing the St. Helen's Building would have been accepted. The good news is this: You folks have the ability to prevent that from ever happening, right here, right now, tonight. To hearken back to the words of Quartz Cleveland, "Your neighbor's place is now available." Don't miss this once-in-a-lifetime strategic opportunity. On behalf of Sally Cleveland, I urge you to vote yes to accept the St. Helen's Building and incorporate it into the upcoming Granbury Opera House renovation. Thank you and good evening.
Ms. Southern, I understand you have one more speaker to present?
One more speaker, yes. Uh, the Granbury Opera House has not run well without the Granbury Opera Guild, who has worked tirelessly through the years for various projects for the Opera House. Ona Pruitt is here tonight to speak for us, uh, and to talk to us about the Guild's involvement and belief in this project.
I'm Ona Pruitt. I live at 5801 Matlock Road, that is in the Acton area, Hood County. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council for allowing us to come before you. I'm here to ask you to consider and approve a resolution to accept the gift of the St. Helen's Building. There have been some wonderful words tonight to help make your decision a smoother transition. As you can tell by each one of the previous speakers, we appeal to you to help us keep the Opera House going and to enlarge the facility to include the St. Helen's Building. I'm representing the Opera Guild of Granbury. The Guild was formed in nineteen-seventy-eight for the purpose of support for the Granbury Opera House. We have fundraisers with one-hundred percent of the money raised going to support the Opera House. In the past, we have had afternoon teas and had a very large gathering of community people. It is not necessary to be a Guild member to enjoy our fundraisers. There was an Opera House cookbook with recipes from the staff and actors that we sold to the community and raised quite a bit of cash. We have had bingo nights at the Granbury Conference Center, and again, a very large turnout. Some of our winning awards were donated from the local merchants, and always the community has very supported for Guild fundraisers. The membership of the Guild, at one time, was quite a large group. We are a much smaller, active group of over sixty-five members. Anyone that would like to join us as an active member may do so and enjoy our luncheons once a month. Volunteers need a project, and we have not had the opportunity to do anything for the Opera House for a while. We want to change that and grow with the Opera House. We want you to support the Opera House, and we are ready to continue to support the Opera House by offering our services to the production company, however we can assist. In the past, we have ushered for the performances, supplied and served food for strike night and cast parties. We have assisted with for- formal opening nights and after-performance parties. Some of our members have assisted with props and costumes. The Guild has cleaned and remodeled rooms at the dorm for visitors, visiting actors and resident company, and yes, we've done toilets, too. By the City Council accepting this great gift of the St. Helen's Building, it proves you really do care about the people of this community. The renovation will improve the ability to bring back tourism dollars and tax money to Granbury. The Guild wants the City Council members to know we stand behind the group of community people to purchase St. Helen's Building and incorporate it into the renovation of the Opera House. The Guild has some monies to contribute to the Opera House for renovation, equipment materials, for props, and many other items as we deem necessary. But our major focus is to support the Opera House with volunteers however we can. We would be available to assist with the sales and souvenir shop. We also have memorabilia from Joanne Miller's estate, and would like to be able to display some of it so visitors to Granbury and attendees to the show could enjoy it. Our contributions are endless when the Opera House reopens. Thank you for the opportunity to let you know how the Guild supports the city and the Opera House, and once again, ask you to incorporate the gift of St. Helen's Building into the house, Opera- into the Opera House footprint. Thank you.
Ms. Southern, did you have any closing remarks?
Faith is the substance of things hoped for, the presence of things unseen. When we gathered about eight weeks ago to talk about bringing St. Helens into the Opera House, we met as a pretty discouraged crowd. In my time in Granbury, since 1980, I have worked in lots of organizations and done lots of volunteer work, and I've always been delighted when someone has given us $1,000 or a project that we had done brought about $5,000. I had never heard in Granbury of having people to offer $300,000 to a project. Further, I had never heard of someone turning that down. So, we got together and said, "Whoa, what are we going to do with this? What are we going to do with this?" And several organizations, five that I will mention tonight, went to work to see if there was something that we could do. The five organizations represented here tonight are the Guild, as you've heard, the Millennium Club, the Lake Granbury Art Association, the Brigade, and Preserve Granbury. Married, I get them all? And the Historic Merchants Association, excuse me, it's six. The idea of utilizing the St. Helens Building goes back at least 20 years. Joanne Miller was talking about it. Eddie Lane talked about it. I thought it was my idea, and there are people all over this room that know that it was a good idea. Our problem was money. If you have served on the Opera House Board, as many people in this audience have, we worked every single year tirelessly, simply to pay bills. Finally, it got to the point where the last Opera Board was unable to do so and needed the help of the City of Granbury, who came in determined not to let the Opera House, our crown jewel, to fail. So, we all gathered, a discouraged bunch, and said, "What can we do?" We decided, first of all, we would have to ask the St. Helens people if they would still sell their building. They have a very nice business there. If you've been in there, it's lovely. And we didn't know if they would really still sell their building. Secondly, we hated to lose that wonderful business to the square, but there are several buildings available on the square, and our understanding is that they intend to relocate. So, we will not be losing a business, but gaining something wonderful for the Opera House. When they said, "Okay, we'll sell," we needed to talk to the Brumleys to see if we'd have any money to offer them. And we didn't quite know how that would go, but they were as excited as we were, and in fact, gave us a lot of encouragement to get started. Now, we are smack dab in the middle of Thanksgiving, candlelight tour, and Christmas, and there were lots of times that many people could not meet, and it is just too much for me to think that we were able to do this. We wanted very much to include the city, to not break any laws by having forums, but we knew we needed to get to work. We went back to the minutes of the October 18th meeting of the Historic Granbury Properties Board, and I would like to read to you from those minutes because this was our chart. Mr. Tyra said that he felt the Brumleys should go forward with their plan, possibly with a nonprofit arrangement that would be all the rest of us, and partnering with the city. Mr. Brumley said he would have to have confidence that if he goes forward with the fundraising, that the plan includes expanding in a later phase. Tyra encouraged the Brumleys to approach the City Council with their plan. Here we are. Here we are with a tremendously wonderful gift, and I have more to tell you about that gift as we go along. In this endeavor, we are trying to be as far-sighted as our preservation leaders, who originally led the community-wide effort to restore the Opera House in the early '70s. We truly believe that today's effort will be a time to raise the curtain on a new era for the Granbury Opera House, and you should have that brochure in your packet as well, and to ensure a viable, long-term future ahead for our beloved community treasure, which was handed down to us by several generations of residents. We wonder about, or we are asking, couldn't you do all of this in the single footprint? Why do we need this other space? Mr. Allen has asked that. People with disabilities have tremendous problems in the current Opera House, and my dad is with me tonight, and he's gone to the Opera House for years and years. It is difficult for him to maneuver with his pain when he is going into the seats. In addition to that, we have to sort of stand around him and make sure that he doesn't lose his balance and fall. People who are in wheelchairs get to the point where they do not come to the Opera House anymore, and yet, we say that it would be wonderful to have buses of people to come to the Opera House, and often, those are senior citizens. I was reading a book recently. It turns out, I'm a senior citizen, so there you go. But at any rate, these are people who often have time to go to plays and to activities. Indeed, my dad lives at Waterview, and over that same period of time we were trying to raise all this money, his crew went to the baths, they went to Cleburne, to the Playhouse over there, and to the Granbury Opera House. So, there's a tremendous interest from older people to be involved with what's going on in the Opera House, and they need that place to be accessible. So, you say, "Let's just do it in the single footprint." The problem is, without more exits, we cannot get people out of that Opera House. If you are at the theater in New York or London and the end of the performance happens, a whole side wall opens up so that people may go out of that side wall. With St. Helens, we have that opportunity. Without it, we are left with the two exits at the front and the two exits at the back, and even an airplane doesn't try to get by with that kind of exits for its people. So, we have a tremendous disability issue and one that we should address. As you know, and I'm sure the single footprint intends to change this, but the bathrooms are absolutely a disgrace, and people cannot get in them well. We need more bathrooms. I believe Councilman Hewlett said, "Why do we need all these bathrooms?" And many of the rumors I've heard around town, and I'm hoping to address them all. But the reason is, when you're in a play, intermission happens at the same time for everyone. If you're at a sporting event, you can come and go. But if you're in a play and you're interested in that play, intermission happens at the same time, and we need more restrooms to help accommodate our guests. Since the visitor center has been off the square, there have been all kinds of people saying that we need a presence of a visitor center on the square. We could accomplish this at St. Helens. Furthermore, if people came in there to get ideas of what to do in Granbury, we could have a film that went on in the Opera House that you could turn on with a button. People could advertise on that as they do at the movies, and we could hear about Granbury and also earn a little income here. And we could have a refreshment spa. All of these things would be things that we can add to that we do not have room for in the current footprint. We also do not have room for a vestibule or a place for people to gather. They're gathering on the street. When the intermission happens and people come out, many go toward the coffee grinder or to get something to drink or whatever, and then there is no place for them to be. We need to have a foyer. That foyer could be used also as a rental. Say you're going to have 18 or 20 people over for dinner. Bass Hall uses their landings to accommodate small reception and so on. We could do the same. As you all know, Granbury recently acquired the Langdon Center. The opportunities of putting the Langdon Center and the Opera House together with the lecture series that John is so fond of, with other things that can come from having our partnership with Charlton are endless. There's all kinds of things that we can do. Currently, the Neely House down at Lambert Branch has had a little cleanup. I understand there are bathrooms there and some meeting space. I just accidentally discovered this. I hadn't heard anything about it, but I happened to be driving by there on a Sunday morning. And it's being used as a church, family reunions, weddings, and there's classrooms. And I have been told by our city manager that, woe and behold, without any advertising, the cost of renovation to that Neely House is about paid for. So, imagine if we had the Opera House that could be rented out occasionally for corporate kinds of gatherings. Granbury's Board of Directors visited, tried to visit with the mayor and all the City Council members, and we tried to listen to what they had to say and to also what the rest of the community had to say. Mr. Hewlett made us aware that he was concerned about being able to renovate the Opera House. How would we do that? He gave us a gift of $575,000 that's got a huge price tag on it. It's an excellent point. So, we've been raising more money. We are right now up to, I think, $95,000, over and above the purchase price. In our little post office box, every time we go to the post office, we're beginning to call it the money place. Yesterday, we received $25,000. Today, we received $1,100. So, there is tremendous interest in this Opera House and people that want to be involved in the renovation. I don't know if $95,000 covers the renovation of the St. Helens Building, but I do know we would like to not be done. We've done this in eight weeks, and there's a lot of people we haven't visited with, and y'all know your names out there. We haven't been to all the civic clubs. We haven't been to all the businesses. We haven't been to the schools. We haven't talked to every long-term supporter and donor of the Granbury Opera House. We had to move fast and quick and look at what we've done. So, if you give us more time, we know that there are lots of things that we need at that Opera House. We need to renovate St. Helens. We need a new curtain. Ugh, that curtain's bad. We need lighting, and we need sound. We need state-of-the-art. What we have in lighting nearly burned my daughter up the year she interned as a summer intern, because she was holding it all, and it just, you know, we had all these burns on her arms when she came home from work. We need state-of-the-art, and those things do not come cheap. If you all allow us, we will keep raising money. We think that this Opera House is so important and that people are so interested in it that they will continue to donate. To give you an idea of what we've got going now, the Brigade has about 96 members, the Opera Guild has about 87, HGMA has 70 businesses, Preserve Granbury has 81 members, Millennium Club has 33. I'm not sure of the number of members of the Lake Granbury Art Association. That adds up to 367 people. In terms of donors, 114 individuals have donated, 23 businesses, six groups, which adds up to 143. If you add those together, we're at 510, and that's just a small number of people who support this Opera House. Look at how full this building is. Councilman Allen expressed concern about ongoing maintenance costs for the building. So, okay, you gift us the building, and then you renovate the building, and then what are we going to do about the maintenance and repair? Well, of course, my favorite example is the one that Dan gave about the Corvette, but I think that there are people that are willing to lease space within the St. Helens Building. I know the Opera Guild would like to have a place where they could display all of the memorabilia that we have from Joanne Miller, and not just Joanne Miller, but from all of the time. I don't think if it all fit in there, we'd have to have different shows. So, I think there are many, many ways that we can raise money at St. Helens to help with everything that's going on in the Opera House. Another concern, and I'm not sure where it originated, is that the Texas Historic Commission would not allow anything at the Opera House since it is a registered Texas landmark. Not only is that... I'm sorry, I just got this today. I just found out this was a concern over the weekend. Not only is it a registered Texas landmark, as you know, the whole square sits on the National Historic Register. So, the question, as I understood it, was the Texas Historic Commission would come down and not allow any of the renovation inside the building, because they would want to be involved in all that. Two things to note. First of all, nothing in that building predates was a part of the original. It's all been added in the last 40 years. And while some of us, my husband included, would like to keep some of the things that have been added there, nothing in there is historic. The Historic Commission, the Texas Historic Commission, would have nothing to say about the interior. The second question, as I understood it, was, well, okay, if you take on the... if you take out the back wall and expand to have more room for staging and so on, which we desperately need, the Texas Historic Commission's going to get involved in that back wall. It is the belief of the Texas Historic Commission, and it is explained here, that it's the front facade that you want to protect, and it's always been okay to add on to a historic building. It's just in the manner that you do it. So, I hope that will answer the concerns. Perhaps it was Councilman Parsons that brought those to me. I hope that will answer the concerns. This comes from the Texas Historic Commission, and the person who signs it is the project reviewer for our area and would be in charge of looking at anything at the Opera House. I hope that that will set any of your minds at ease on that. Then another concern I have heard is that we need to cut back and not add on, because, you know, we are in times of recession. I didn't think ever that the national news... I didn't think ever that the national news would agree that we really have always stayed in recession, but now even they are saying that. In times of recession, someone needs to have the vision to create an economic boom for the community so that somehow we can dig ourselves out. If we just sit and cry, woe is me, it's not going to get any better. But we know, do not pass go, that the Opera House works in helping the economy of this city. We have heard, too, that it might ruin businesses if there were a concession stand inside the St. Helen's Building. I've been fortunate to be at the Bass Hall a lot of times and at all kinds of theaters all over the world, and each and every one of them have had a concession stand, not someplace they prepare meals, but a concession stand. And there have been restaurants and gift shops and bookstores and everything around all those theaters, and no one has seemed to have a problem with it. I don't see that that's a thing that we need to worry too much about. Another more recent concern I've heard is that perhaps we are tying too many strings to this, that there's a lot of things that we want. There is one string. It is to integrate the St. Helen's Building into the Granberry Opera House. That is the string. You have a letter that we addressed to Mayor Ricky Pratt that you have in your packet. We have a couple of wishes, and we certainly hope you would take those seriously. We have a lot of donors, and we want to be able to honor them in some way in the Opera House. We also think that our advisors and the members of our committees have a lot invested and to offer on the Historic Properties Board, and we would love to take a seat and work with you on that board. Those are wishes. The string is that it be integrated together. Oh, good. Okay. Now, like the original restoration of the Granberry Opera House in 1970s, when the Opera House provided impetus for the revitalization of the town square, we believe this will happen again. Sales tax in 1970 was $19,000. In 1976, after the Opera House had been open a year, sales tax was $100,000. Additionally, I had coffee this morning with Mayor Ken Hill. He was mayor of Granberry when the Opera House renovation was happening, and he paid all of $25,000 for his pharmacy on the square, which was in the central Texas title Brown Walton Building. Twenty-five thousand, and he thought he was really being pleased. I don't think they're going to sell central Texas title in Brown Walton for $25,000 this year or any year after this, but property and values for the square in 1970, for the entire square, including the courthouse, were $525,000. In 1976, they were $1.25 million. The Opera House makes a difference to Granberry. It makes a difference in sales tax, and that helps us with the maintenance. Because of the generosity of all of these people that you see sitting here, we are so proud to announce that we have this wonderful, wonderful gift to give you. It ought to be like Christmas around here. And we want to continue to raise money to help with the expenses of renovating not only St. Helen's, but bringing much-needed tasks into the project that you committed to with the Granberry Opera House. Mr. Mayor, one of our speakers had to do counseling late tonight, but she has arrived. Would you permit her to speak?
Uh, yes.
She was doing a good thing. She was counseling.
I just wasn't aware of another guest speaker.
I'm so sorry. We didn't think she would make it.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Miss Southern something?
Sure. At this time, we would probably be best to ask a few questions of you as well. Councilman Allen, go ahead.
Miss Southern, just one question. You said that the Opera House opened in 1975?
Yeah, uh, it opened in 1976.
The taxes, you said it went from nineteen thousand to a hundred?
Mm-hmm.
Just on the Opera House alone?
Well, certainly not. I mean, that... you had the whole city.
Oh, okay.
You've got the whole city.
Okay.
I'd like to state that I was involved in the opera company in 1975.
You didn't want to be taxed.
So I just wanted to correct you. It is 1975.
It is 1975, yeah. But in 19... well, I'm sorry. I've got it in my notes. The year after the Opera House opened, 1976, city taxes were $100,000. In 1970, they were $19,000.
What was the difference in population?
Between '70 and '76? All of the three, '77, didn't start until much later, but I can get the specific numbers for you if that will help.
Anyone else have a question for Miss Southern, Council? We may call you back here in just a little bit. You have a guest you'd like to have us address?
This is Jessica Grimm, and she would like to speak to you about the accessibility of the Opera House for individuals who are disabled.
Ms. Grimm, can I get you to come around the podium for me?
How do I get around the podium?
Well, see, there you go. There's an accessibility issue right there.
Thank you.
We try to be accommodating.
Right? Okay.
Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Yes. I'm Jessica Grimm, and I live at 1202 Crawford Court, Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I'm going to keep this really short because I'm sure y'all have listened to a lot of talk by now. And I just wanted to speak on accessibility. I got injured when I was 14, and my mom used to work in Granberry, and we went to the Opera House all the time.
I'm sorry, Ms. Grimm. Can I get you to spin around to where you're addressing us, please?
Oh, I didn't know who I was addressing.
I'd like for you to address the council, if you would, please.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyway, my mom used to work here, and we used to go to the Opera House all the time when I was growing up. And I got injured when I was 14 and have not really been able to go to the Opera House since. I think accessibility is an issue. I think it's awesome that Preserve Granberry is wanting to renovate in order to have accessibility. And I think it should be an issue for everybody, not just older people, but it's an issue for tourists in general. I think it's going to become a bigger issue as time goes on, and I think it's something that's important to do now. And I would like to go see a play at the Opera House. So, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I really don't have much more to say except that what we do is not only for ourselves, and it should not be, but it should be for the generations that come beyond us. The folks that did all the work in 1970, look at how long they have impacted us. And I think we owe it to them, and I think we owe it to the generations beyond us to do a beautiful job at the Opera House. We at Preserve Granberry and all our partner agencies want to be involved in that. We want for you to tell us, go out and keep running to the post office and getting more money. We hope that you will accept this gift in the generosity with which it has been given. Thank you.
Ms. Southern, I have a question for you, please. In the letter, you stated about the request to have the ability to name a portion of the facility and also to a request to sit on the Board of Directors of the Granberry Historic Properties. This donation, I just want to clarify, it is not contingent upon that. That's just merely a request that was added to the letter. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. This is what we would like. We certainly think that donors should have some kind of recognition. They did in the beginning, and we think surely we would want to do that. We would also like to sit on that Historic Properties Board. But the only string that is in the contract, those are requests, the only string that is in the contract is that the St. Helen's Building be integrated into the Granberry Opera House project.
I understand that portion of it. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Pruitt, I've got a question for you. Does anybody else on council have any other questions for Ms. Southern? Ms. Pruitt, I've got a question for you, please. You had stated that the current membership of the Opera Guild is 65 members, but I...
We have over 65, but...
I seem to recall at one time it was over 1,000 members. Am I wrong with that?
Maybe not 1,000, but it was over 300 at one time.
It was over 300. Okay. I just wanted some clarification because something just told me it seemed like there was a massive number of members.
We have fallen down with our membership in the last five years.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for any of these presenters? I want to mention to the council members that we have a resolution in your package. It includes language that authorizes the city manager to immediately replat the Opera House property along with the St. Helen's property into a single plat of record and immediately incorporated into the ongoing renovation of the Opera House, along with authorizing the mayor to execute any documents relating to said transfer of property to the city.
Mr. Mayor...
This time, I entertain a motion to accept this gift and approve the resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move adopt a resolution accepting the donation of the St. Helen's Building.
I'll second that.
And approve the resolution. I take it adopt the resolution is what you're stating.
Adopt the resolution, agreeing to make application to replat the St. Helen's Building and the footprint of the Opera House, agreeing to include the St. Helen's Building in ongoing renovations of the Granberry Opera House, and authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as necessary.
All right. We have a motion, and are you willing to second that entire motion? All right. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We will now open it up for debate. I would like to ask Scott, if you could bring up our time clock. We're going to ask that every speaker on this... this is strictly between council. We'll go for 10 minutes. Every speaker has a chance to talk. Since I brought the item before us, I'll be talking first. Councilman Tyra, just before we get started, would you prefer to be last to speak during the first round, or would you like to follow me?
I'm going to yield my time. I'm not going to make a contribution.
All right. Thank you. All right. So if you would, start the clock for me, please. First off, I'd like to thank the contributors and especially John and Becky Bromley. The personal donation of this matching fund, $300,000, is going to go a long way if it's approved. Sally Cleveland, the Quartz Cleveland Trust Fund, their donation is tremendous. The fact that this was all done in a period of time that was six to eight weeks speaks in itself of the community's support on this matter. The funds, if you'll notice in your packet, council members, they are readily available. We have notation that those funds are there, ready. Is there a tax impact? Yes, there might be a sales tax movement on the square, but that doesn't mean it's a loss in revenue. In fact, I anticipate that this stimulus, this local stimulus program, we talk about how can we stir the economic development in your own community. It comes from local support. Local support is what we have right here before us, council members. This is a local stimulation project to help support a $1.2 million project that has been sitting on the table for some... since 2007, I believe, if not before. We've talked about it in the years past. In 1980, it was brought up for discussion. It just wasn't a feasible thing. But what we have before us is staring us in the face to say to this community, we don't want your tax monies to go towards this project, that we don't want your community support, your investment, your goodwill gesture is a slap in the face of those that we have sitting out there. They are our constituents. Our purpose here on council is to provide the city with the best opportunity for the city as a whole. This is not to be a one-sided lake property owners versus the Opera House and the tourism industry. This is what's good for the community. When you look at the Opera House, when you look at people that come to the lake, they look for nightlife. You can't be out there on the lake at night. If you are, it's dangerous. We need to provide entertainment. With entertainment come the eateries, come the shoppers. With the increase in revenue and the increase in the footprint, we actually can encourage an intermission to take place in a record time at the Opera House. They used to run 30 minutes to have an Opera House intermission. If you can get the timeframe down to 15-minute increments just by increasing the bathroom, making it easily accessible through ingress and egress archways that are cut into the adjacent structure, you have got a win-win venue. The grandeur that is the Opera House, it's already being planned for a single footprint, but the expansion into the adjacent structure is a no-brainer. You will never see this kind of a goodwill gesture happen again in our terms because of the fact that this outpouring is a timeliness issue. We need to get things on the ground. You may ask, where are we at in the ongoing build-design structure? I've been informed that there are five steps to the build-design, build-structure issue. Construction phases are these. You have the schematic designs phase. That's phase one. You have preliminary plan. That's two. We have the design development phase. That's when they actually start looking into the architectural, the engineering, designing of the walls. We are still in phase two, of which there are five phases. After the design development stage, you have the construction document phase where it's got to be put out to bid for the construction, where architects and subcontractors join hands and they come to a meeting of the minds and say, this is how we're going to proceed. You have bid negotiations. All of these steps are vital in this reconstruction phase. Is this a big project? Did it take on a new breath of fresh air by having this group come forward with a gift? By all means it has, but it's not something that we ourselves didn't put on the table back in 2011. It was talked about then. The discussion dwelt on the fact that it was $575,000 of taxpayer dollars to make this happen. We're not talking about that any longer, council members. What we're talking about is cleaning some restrooms, modifying some walls that adjoin it, make it accessible for the wheelchair people. And it's not just wheelchair people that we're talking about here. We're talking about accessibility. We are an aging society. All of us are aging. I guarantee you, I'd like to think that I'm 28, but my body, when I get out of bed, says, wake up, you're 55! We're all suffering from those aging symptoms. We have a council member that has issues going upstairs now. He utilizes the elevator. These are concerns that we all need to be addressing. We should be accommodating. We should be forthright-thinking. Forward-thinking is what I expect of this council, what serves best our community as a whole. That's my time for this first round. That's my time for this first round. All right. I entertain anybody that wants to speak on this matter next. Please let me know who you want to talk. Councilman Perkel, it's your time. You're going to have ten minutes to talk on the matter, sir.
It won't take me that long, I don't believe. I moved here in nineteen seventy-nine to become an insurance agent. At that point, you start to look at saying, "Where do I want to advertise?" And those of you that have been here long enough remember the Olio. Is it not working?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, the Olio, for me to get on the Olio, took me five years. Honestly, that's how, that's how many people. That was thirty-two thousand dollars, one stroke, every year. The next thing was if you didn't call Thursday or Friday night to get a ticket at the Opera House, you couldn't get one. I don't care if you were a season ticket holder. If you didn't get it, get it, you know, it was gone. We need that again. We need people coming to visit because of that. I'm a Kiwanis member, okay? About ten years ago, I was at St. Louis at the International Convention, which is the whole world. Got off the plane. Guy met me. He says, "Oh, I had an Opera House shirt on because of the golf tournaments." And I know all of you remember the golf tournaments that are old as I am. So he walked up and he says, "Hey, I'm glad, you're from Granberry?" I said, "Yes, I am." He said, "I visited my daughter in Dallas three months ago. We went to the Opera House." What I'm saying is we were known, we're known all, all out around more than just in Granberry. Let me see. Another thing that we used to do, how many of you remember ushering at the Opera House? Yeah, look at the hands. Man, Friday afternoon or Saturday night, Friday night, you'd get a telephone call. "We don't have enough people tomorrow. Can you come usher?" We did that. There are several things that we can do as individuals. And one thing that I want to do, I want to be the one that said, "I voted to do this" because I think it's vital to our society, to our town. About five years ago at one of the TML meetings, they said, "You have to make either a business, your destination business, or a destination city." We were a destination city several years ago. We're not now, folks. I was at Fredericksburg probably twenty years ago, went into the candles carbon shop and says, "You know, one of these in Granberry would go along real well, really would." Okay, it moved here. How many of you remember where it was on the west side of the square? It's gone now. What I'm saying is that's what needs to happen. And I hate to put a burr under the, under the saddle of some people that have businesses on the square, but one thing you have to do is you have to get a product that people want and use and not get the same thing. And I hate to say that, but it's that way. And it's not all, but what I'm saying is we have a chance to do something that will help our community. And I get a little emotional because I think we need to make Granberry grow. And this is the only way we're going to do it. One of the few things that we can do now ourselves is, you know, ten dollars, twenty dollars, whatever, but we need to do it. And I don't know, how many of you still have a plaque on a chair in the Opera House, but I've got one.
Thank you, Councilman Perkel. Mr. Allen?
I guess I'm ready. I couldn't follow you, so. I never, I've never been an actor and just trying to be a councilman now. But let me tell you, this is the hardest decision that I've ever made tonight. It was so bad that we have Bible study on Thursday night. Usually I request for my gout, my feet to be prayed on or prayed for, or my back, or my wife's back, but this time it was about a decision. Because this is a tough one. And the old saying is, nothing's free, just like Dan said about the Corvette. If he wants to give it to me, I'll take it and I'll buy the gas because I want one nearer than then. But, you know, first of all, I want to thank the people that gave and put it together. It's good outreach for the whole county and the city to come together at one time to do something like this. Ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent of the money was brought from outside the city, which was really, really good. Also, this has been a dream for several y'all for twenty years. And a few years back, the city, I went on the council, borrowed one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's been sitting there and the taxpayers have been paying for that for many years. Same year, they bought a million dollar parking lot. My fact, the two guys that made the motion second, it was on the, was on the board then, on the council. That time that parking lot was paid at two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is free. I understand that. But it was such a good deal, I wish the council would have seen it back then and would have invested that money on that building. It could have bought it a lot cheaper and this could already been done years ago instead of investing it in a parking lot that's used four times a year. That's pass. Now, the bathrooms, I looked at the drawings. How many of y'all out there have seen the new drawings just came out with? You seen them? Anybody else seen them out there? One of the, okay, you seen them? As you look at it, they've got six women bathrooms and six men. I got with, with Brian Gaffin and also with Andrew. He met with each one of the council people and the mayor. And I asked them, "Would this service what we need?" They both said yes. Also, I voted back about a year ago, I guess, we've been talking about this for a year and a half now, about buying the building for five hundred and seventy-five thousand. I voted to do it with a ninety-day study to see that we could get the check for asbestos. I hadn't been here twenty years, like you said, yet, but I've been here a few years and I heard a lot about what happened when they tore down the other building. And it caused the city a lot of problems with asbestos. That was never checked. Number two, drilling through the walls. I'm not an architect, but that was one of my requests to make sure we could put those arches in there. Never was done. Number three, more seating. This drawing, I believe, is three hundred and nineteen seats that we can put in there. It's bigger than it is today. With the drawings that they got, it's unbelievable. It's nice. The concession stand, they got two of them in there. Not just one, but two. The city, the taxpayers of this city, has been losing sixty thousand dollars a year since we took over. That's sixty thousand dollars a year we took over. Looks like our taxes are going up, electric was going up. The people living in this city are taxed to death. I think it's a great offer, a great gift, but nothing's free in life. The air conditioning units haven't been checked. The roof hasn't been checked. For that contract, it says, "As is, where is." And that's, you're taking it like it is. Other deal in there is other businesses. And I've been getting emails. By the way, I want to plug Buffalo Gap for a minute to see if you plugged her off her deals and Gary Couch. But I've seen more y'all at my restaurant in the last thirty days than I've ever seen. And I appreciate that. And I know a lot of them are not going to come back because they're going to get their feelings hurt if I vote the wrong way. I understand that. But I'm hoping that we can all come together, whatever this vote is, and all work together for one reason. That's for Granberry. As you said, Claudia, that we needed drapes, lighting, sound system. We need our, every bit of that. That cost is about three fifty to four hundred thousand, what they're estimating. We would love to have that money to do that if y'all really love the Opera House and want this thing to go forward. I looked at it, safety. It's got two exits in it. It's got handicaps in the front where you can park, set all the way across the front of it. It's got exits. Only thing you'd be gaining on the other side is, is more restrooms and moving the concession stand from one building to the other and two doors out the front. Safety, they assured us it was, it was safe. I've had over a hundred taxpayers in the city of Granberry either call me, come by to see me, or email me. Now that hundred, I'm going to say maybe ten of them was far. The rest of them says, "Y'all just stuck on a big obligation down here and do we need to be taxed anymore?" I know a lot of y'all live in the city, a lot of y'all live in the county. But it's one of those situations that I'm hoping that Bromley's will work with us. We've got a beautiful convention center here. If it is turned down, if it's voted for, that's great. But if it's turned down, I hope y'all got that much energy to go in the convention center and have these meetings you're talking about. I think they're very, very important, very good for the community. See if you asked a question, we'll go and, about him, he's been here twenty years, ten years, five years, four years. All y'all that are not registered voters in the city of Granberry, would y'all stand up? Y'all are not registered voters. Okay. All right. Thank y'all very much. Thank you. Now, with all the stuff that we've got going on-
Can I ask you to hold it down out there, please?
With all the stuff we've got going on in the city of Granberry, it's pretty tough. So it'll be voted on in a minute and we'll see what happens.
Councilman Parsons, you want to speak on this at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think I know why I love this city so much now. I've been here twenty-six years. And I want to tell each of you how much I thank you for your effort and for your hard work and your belief in the city and what we do and where we're going and what we might plan and what we might think of. I'm energized by the possibility of bringing on the St. Helen's Building and adding that to our many wonderful assets that we have. Assets that we're just getting, the Langdon Center, Lambert Branch Park with the restoration of those historic assets, the Depot, the Shandley House, the Courthouse, the old jail, the log cabin. What a wonderful bunch of assets the city owns and controls. And the need for those assets is only one thing. That's tourism. That's sales tax dollars. Claudia gave you an example of what happens when people put their money and effort and time and energy into a project. Sales taxes go out the top. That's what a city councilman needs to understand is that sales tax is the major part of this formula. That in the time that I've been on council, city taxes, property tax rate has not gone up. Thank you. And one reason for that is sales tax growth, right? Creating retail dollars, creating retail industry in our city. It's my opinion that adding the St. Helen's Building to the Opera House complex will do exactly that again. That we might see that sales tax revenues growing on three seventy-seven grow as much in the next twenty years as they have in the last thirty or forty years that the Opera House has been in existence. Twenty-six years ago, when I came to town, there was an advertisement in the Hood County News. Needed actors at the Opera House for a show called John Wilkes Booth, The Myth and the Mummy. So everybody showed up, right? I mean, all of us crazy people showed up down there for this thing. Quite a show. It was an interesting show. Quite a take on the history of our town. The possibility that John Wilkes Booth might have come here and lived here and created a name called St. Helen. That out of that legacy, there is a legacy of downtown of being entertainment and having people come here to enjoy our fine city. My position on this deal has been clear since the first time we addressed it. It hasn't changed. I still think that the addition of the St. Helen's to our Opera House complex is a great asset and that it would be more than pay for whatever cost to operate or whatever it is to, to maintain that building. What if we had made that decision with the original Opera House? Oh, we can't afford it. It might not work. But it did. It worked wonderfully. And all of you have been into other towns and other cities and talked to people, "Oh, you're from Granberry. I know about your Opera House. I've seen your, I've been to your Opera House." How many places have you been and heard that? How many places have you seen that? And all you people that worked at the Opera House, your hard work to maintain that and to keep it going, the Opera Guild and the, I can see people that have been served on the Opera House board for many years. And I appreciate your efforts and what it has meant for this city. The, my understanding is that late this afternoon, the architect did get up on the roof and inspect the roof of the Opera House itself and that roof is in good shape. One of the air conditioning units up there is brand new. I've seen the picture of the new footprint and it is nice. But just think how much nicer it's going to be when we add the St. Helen's Building to that project. Thank you for your support. I pray that tonight we make a decision that will make this city grow and prosper as much as it has over the last forty years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to hear from Mr. Hewlett?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I too want to, I want to thank everyone that's put forth any effort and the support of the people that have made the contributions out there and have made the donations and also the people that have worked hard on the blueprints and the, and the, and the design of the, of the different, of the different scenarios here. I think that the people worked on these prints and everything, they had a lot, they had a lot of involvement here. These people that, everyone that is doing this, I know is, is concerned about the growth in the community and are trying to revitalize the tourism and the history of Granberry. Once somebody made a statement about how fa, or how they didn't think that they could raise that kind of money. I, for one, never doubted that at all because I've seen the way Granberry raises money since I've been here. Me and my wife both have been involved in several fundraisers, charitable organizations, things like that. And every time I see them, the organizations exceed what they go out to do. So that part of it never surprised me at all. My hat's off to you that, that they have raised that kind of money, but I, I see that in Granberry and that's what makes Granberry what it is right now. Some of the points that's been pointed out through this whole thing and I've been involved in it since June. It was one of the first things that was on the council when I got elected to, to the city council. And then that night there, we had voted against it. But some of the, some of the points that kind of stick in my mind, that the things that people have wanted in taking on the St. Helen's Building is, you know, better restrooms, more concession, more seating, the added office space for the CBPs and the, and the tourists and, and arts and crafts and things like that. Well, I too have seen the footprint that is set forth out there and we've looked at that with Brian Gaffin and, and Severin there. And it is a great print and it, it accommodates every one of these things. And it also accommodates them with the, with the value that we put there, the money that we have to spend on this. And the one thing it doesn't cover is the office space and the, the additional stuff for tourism and, and anything else that you'd want over there. But I stood up here about two months ago and we took on the Langdon Center. And when we talked about the Langdon Center, that was the one thing we wanted to do. We wanted to put that stuff out there in the Langdon Center. We want to make the Langdon Center a part of the square. We want to make that part of, we want to extend the, the tourists out there and we want to put all that stuff there. So, you know, I, I hope that's the road that we still want to go down. I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that's where we want to go with that and I want to continue to, to enforce that. I'm, I'm excited about this, this single footprint design that Mr. Gaffin has thrown together for us. And, and I don't feel that the current economic conditions support what you'd call a build and they will come concept, such as taking on the St. Helen's Building. I truly feel that with the acceptance of the St. Helen's Building and with the long-term maintenance and the, the overhead cost, that it would not be a good decision for, you know, for the citizens of Granberry. It's neither prudent or responsible use of the citizen's tax money. So with all of that in the best interest of the community, I don't see why we'd, we'd want to take on another building to do what we're doing with the Opera House right now. This Opera House, this print that we have, it covers everything. It has better bathrooms. It has bigger bathrooms. It has more seating. And we have the handicap accessibility, everything we need. The concession, we've improved the concession. The one thing that I didn't like about it was it did enlarge the, the box office. And I talked to them about it then. I said, "You know, maybe we could take that box office and make that a little smaller because as everybody knows nowadays, you don't go to the box office merely to get tickets. You usually get them online via that phone, whatever. It's not like it was back in the seventies, I'm sure." But the box office is there and we've enlarged that too. Where some people, that was a concern. So we do have a larger box office. We have all that. We just don't have the office space over there, but we have that all back there in the Langdon Center. And, and I truly want to go forward with that- and I truly want to go forward with that Langdon Center and keep that intact also, so think about the things and I'm thinking about the things that it would do for the city and with the single footprint not using that St. Helen's Building.
Thank you, sir. Well, we've all spoke regarding this except for Councilman Tyra, so we're going to start our rebuttal round. Councilman Tyra, I'm going to let you go first during that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for all being here tonight. I'm very blessed to be able to see passionate people at work. As you all know, I'm very passionate about standing up for the voters and we have forty-six hundred voters approximately in this city. And I want to say that I pray that tonight, whatever comes out of this vote, whatever the outcome is, that everyone here tonight continue to support the Opera House and its future. As you all have spoken very clearly, you've gave us history, you've talked to us about currently what was done, and I want to resound what Councilmember Hewlett stated, is that this money was raised very quickly. And as you all know, their, this group is very, very influential, it can raise two and three and four times this money. As we sit here today, you've heard some figures about what we're going to need as far as operational equipment, curtains, some other things that are going to be provided because of the theater needs to the tune of maybe four hundred thousand dollars extra. The fact is that when you see this design, and you all are not in a position that have seen this, so when we talk about how grand it is, how beautiful, of course, we're up here seeing it, we've talked to Brian Gaffin, and as you all know, I was instrumental in bringing Andrew Barris here because we need to completely move forward, get on this fast track, get this thing open. So for us to talk about how nice it is, you'll get to see this, but I'm talking about eight handicapped seats, level, so you can bring people, no elevators. I mean, this is everything that we ever talked about and it's beautiful. And we can do it, we can do it with actually the 1.2 million we have in the bank and then we'll have to deal with those other issues. You know as well as I do, as Mr. Allen said, nothing's for free. The fact is that there are tons of costs that go along with all these issues and that's unknown. We're on a fast track to get this done. The money has been in the bank since 2007. And I pray that, that folks will support and go forward because we got people like Brian Gaffin and Andrew Barris who have put their heads together and worked with our city staff. And we have a real, workable solution where we can use the money that we're already paying debt on and we can go forward. And I want to say too, that there were some things that were said tonight that seemed to be somewhat negative. There have been some things said to me since this come up that have been very negative. The fact is that this is democracy. You all have lobbied well, done a fantastic job, and it's going to come to a vote. But whatever decision is made, let's join hands and move forward because this has been touted to many people incorrectly that this is the life or the death of the city of Granbury. And let me say to you that everybody up here supports Opera House. We brought Andrew here. We're moving this thing forward in a magnificent, great way. Yes, when you say those things, I actually agree with most of everything you said about an additional building, but why should that be owned by the city of Granbury? I spoke at that October eighteenth meeting and really appreciated as the Brumleys came forward. We got to hear from Mr. Brumley, we got to hear from Ms. Brumley. And when you see those folks up one-on-one, because it was back here in this chamber back here at the Granbury Historical Property Meeting, you could see their passion and their drive, and when he talks about lecture series, those are the kind of things that would be fantastic here. There's a building for sale right now in the square, as we all know it, Granbury Live. Awesome opportunity. Our conference center would be an awesome opportunity. We lost businesses on this square and it wasn't because the city council did anything with Opera House or against Opera House. Someone could say, and it's been said to me, I didn't say it, that maybe if the council acted in 2007, when they got that bond money, maybe we wouldn't be in this position. But that, that's a negative kind of thing to say. I'm saying, no, let's join hands, folks. Let's agree that we have a single footprint, and you all will see it very soon. Everything that's talked about here tonight. In fact, Mr. White spoke specifically about some bullet points. Better access, larger lobby, more exits, improved concession. We're covering those issues. They're covered on this single footprint. It's unreal to see this when you've heard everything we've seen, you've sat in the meetings we've sat in for the last year and two months. And Mayor, I want to save a little bit more time for rebuttal, but I did want to speak specifically to what I stated...
I just want to state that you turned down your time to talk twice. This is it, yes?
No, I appreciate it, Mayor, no, that's good. Thank you, thank you. I understand, appreciate that. So I will try to use all ten minutes.
That's fine, sir.
I may cut it short because I don't want to, the crowd's been here long enough, but the fact is that at that October eighteenth meeting, I said to the city, "I don't want anybody to leave this room." And if you want to go back and listen to the audio, I went and got it this weekend, actually got it Monday, and listened to it last night to make sure that there was no misspeaking. I made it very clear to everybody in that room, "Please, folks, don't leave here thinking there's going to be something that's going to happen because we're moving forward with a single footprint." And I encouraged Mr. Brumley and these groups to go forward. In fact, I still encourage that. In fact, as someone who believes that the private sector should be involved in many more of these things in the public sector, and we do need to have private and partner relationships, partnerships, I'd like for you all to think about this. This Opera House operated for thirty-one years in the private sector. Property taxes were paid, debts were paid. It was operated with all these great volunteers, some that have, are not here anymore, some that are here tonight in this room. The fact is that because of that near failure that Claudia talked about, in 2006, a local city did a bailout. The mayor said it right, it was a stimulus package. And I think he was using stimulus for stimulating now, but that was a stimulus package. The council bailed out a private entity and took all that debt on and paid off these creditors. Listen, the way this group is going, I would hope that my colleagues up here would entertain as we get this footprint finished and get open and things start happening and people are coming to our city, that our, that my colleagues entertain maybe this group buying the whole Opera House, the St. Helen's Building, everything. So keep raising money. We've got to get something done, and I think we can still get this done, but let's do not do it on the backs of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, I move that we call the question. I make a motion that we call the question.
That requires a second, sir. We have a call for the question. All in favor of the call for the question, please raise your hand. Well, that's definitely a majority. You know, that sort of circumvents the whole process, councilmembers of debate and the proper process of parliamentary procedure which we were trying to adhere to. I'd like to, like it placed into the minutes that I, I believe that was a a very unfriendly gesture towards the opportunity to debate this particular issue. We do have a motion, we do have a second on the floor. The motion reads, and pardon me as I go back to get it right, "A motion to adopt a resolution accepting the donation of the St. Helen's Building, agreeing to make application to replat the St. Helen's Building into the footprint of this Opera House property, agreeing to include the St. Helen's Building in ongoing renovations of the Granbury Opera House and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the transfer of this property." All in favor, please raise your hands. Let the record show that we have two, Councilman Parson and Councilman Perkel. Those opposed, please raise your hands. Let the record reflect that Councilman Hewlett, Tyra, and Allen are in the negative. Motion fails.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Go right ahead, Mr. Parson.
In our, in the disappointment in that not passing, in striving to move forward as a city, as a striving to move forward as a community, I challenge each of us here tonight to make a decision to support going forward, to overcome the disappointment, to maybe think that perhaps out of this community effort to raise funds, that we can strive to do that again. I've seen this same floor print that they've talked about and very simply, I can tell you that it's not going to be adequate based on what's going to go on in the back and it's going to need at least another six hundred thousand dollars to build it out the way it should be built to provide the audio and video equipment that it should have. So I challenge you as a community to perhaps rethink this and then join us because that's the decision the council has made. I appreciate every one of you. Thank you for coming.
We'll take a short recess, ten minutes. We're going to call this meeting back into session. I would like to point out for the record though, when we called the question vote, that according to parliamentary procedure, I may have jumped the gun. It requires a two-third vote in the yea in order to call for the question and close debate, so we'll know that in the future.
Mayor, for the record, we've done it many a times.
Mayor, that's really unfair if you, if you leave it like that. The fact is that our rules of procedure have never adopted parliamentary rules of procedure, period.
I run the meeting, Councilman. I run the meeting.
You don't get to make the rules.
Councilman, I still run the meeting. When you get to be the mayor, you can step up here, you can sit here, and you can run the meeting, sir.
I asked you a question, do you do it on...
Get back on to number two. I'm, I'm ready to start with parliamentary procedure, which I would like to start adopting during my meetings, and I would appreciate it if you don't speak out of turn. We are moving on to item number two. This time, we will open a public hearing for item number two and three. We will open them up consecutively. We will now open a public hearing regarding a request of Texas Lakes Incorporated to rezone a seventeen point seven zero one acre tract of the John Chinowith survey, abstract number one-one-eight, from interim holding to planned development with a base district of residential slash seven thousand. And consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. The PD will allow for five-foot side building setbacks. The property is located east of the existing lots along Abe's Landing Drive and north of the Landing Boulevard. We have also had a request of Texas Lakes Incorporated to execute a public improvements agreement for the installation of water and sewer mains to support Abe's Landing, Phase Four A. The estimated public improvement cost equal two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we will also be opening a public hearing regarding final plat a seventeen point seven zero one acre tract of the John Chinowith survey, abstract number one-one-eight, as lots nine through twenty-four, block five, lots fifteen through twenty-one, block six, and lots one through twelve, block eleven, of the Abe's Landing addition, Phase Four A. And consider and approve said final plat. The property is located east of the existing lots along Abe's Landing Drive and north of the Landing Boulevard. Scott, if you would, please get us started on this item number two and three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have before us is an application, or actually two applications and a contract regarding the next subsequent phase where Abe's Landing, you can see the area bordered in red on the aerial photography. It's currently zoned interim holding. The applicant is proposing to propose an application for rezoning to a planned development. The purpose of the planned development is to provide for five-foot setbacks instead of the combined fifteen or five on one side, ten on the other, or combined sum of fifteen on each. It doesn't affect the interior street side. Subsequently, the applicant has also filed a request to execute a public improvement agreement in conjunction with a final plat application. I can tell you the final plat application is consistent with the preliminary plat that was previously approved by P&amp;Z and Council. The public improvements to support the plat as presented for Four A is approximately two hundred and three thousand dollars. It's been reviewed by our city engineer. Both P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval of the rezoning request of the PD as presented, as well as execution of the PIA and the final plat as presented by the applicant.
Councilmembers, we have two, three items before us. Do you have any questions for city staff regarding this or from the applicant? I take it silence is golden on this issue? I have a public hearing open, so I've got to close the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on any of these items that are before us in this public hearing? There being nobody, we will close the public hearing. Now I can entertain that motion. I need each one of them done as a separate item, please. Let's start off with the first part, which is in item two, please, the rezoning. We have a motion from Mr. Perkel to approve the rezoning as requested and presented. We have a second from Mr. Allen, I believe, is that correct? All in favor of rezoning request of Texas Lake Properties to rezone a seventeen point seven zero one acre tract of the John Chinowith survey, abstract number one-one-eight, from interim holding to planned development with a base district of residential seven thousand, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We can move on to item number three. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion to execute a public improvements agreement for the installation of water and sewer lane, mains to support Abe's Landing Phase Four to the approximate cost of two hundred and three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, a second by Mr. Allen. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now before us is the application to approve a final plat of a seventeen point seven zero one acre tract of the John Chinowith survey. Entertain a motion to approve the final plat as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Parson, a second by Mr. Perkel. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us to item number four. We will now open a public hearing regarding a request of Gary Couch to amend the existing planned development zoning district for property located at four oh one East Pearl Street, being a two point three four nine acres described as tract one of file plat one of the Lodge of Granbury. And consider and approve an ordinance providing for said amended PD. The amendment will allow for modification of the exterior facades and the installation of a new monument sign. Councilmembers, I'd like to remind you that we were presented with a planned development for this tract of property earlier. The applicant has come back to request an addendum to that. Scott, can you bring up the slide that has to do with those arch areas and where we're talking about windows and stuff, as you mentioned to me, and staff report, please?
That's correct, Mayor. In essence, the existing planned development has seven provisions to it. You can see it tied to the current adoption ordinance tied to the property. What the applicant's proposing is to amend item number three and seven. Item number three relates to the exterior facade of the eastern elevation. You could see the, what was previously presented as stone all the way through the top plate of the building. The applicant wants now to present the council with the opportunity to modify that, to put stucco reveals in there to make the building pop out a little bit and not look like a solid opaque wall. Also, on the elevation, and this elevation that's on the bottommost slide below the screen would be the one facing the beach. Would be to modify and add three windows on each side of the elevation vertically along the side of the building. The other modification would be to allow for a change from what was previously presented to the public assembly office area. It's on the upper left corner of the screen from stone to kind of a stucco parapet above the entryway as well. The second modification to the PD is item number seven to allow...
Can we stop with just the modifications to stucco, just to make... Can we stop with just the modifications to stucco, just to make it clear? In the drawings that we're seeing over on the right-hand side, these inserts that we see of a different, shall we say, pattern, those are the stucco?
That's correct. The little archways in the center of the building, those are the...
And those sconces are, where the sconces are, I take it?
Yes.
Okay. And then on the front elevation view, we're talking above the archways on that drawing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that we're all understanding, because talking about it and viewing it here, it's a little overwhelming to me, so...
The other thing that was added, Mayor, Council, is the gables within the pitch of the roof. That's an addition as well. That was basically just a pitched roof as previously presented under the PD. The next item is an alteration to item number seven regarding the installation of a monument sign. What's being proposed now is, you can see in the upper left, is the elevation as presented from Streetscape. What he's asking is to encroach into a, we have a required 10-foot sign setback measured from the back of the property line to the interior of the property. This particular piece of property has its own uniqueness in that you can see in the upper right corner where the sign footprint is being placed, delineated in blue, it's in a little notch where basically the parking area and the sidewalk wrap around. So you can see the sight visibility issue. We had staff go out there and take a look at it, and your line of sight would be the red area, and on the very bottom, it would be highlighted in that brown arrow that's basically jutting to the right, wrapping around the notch. Your sight visibility issue is from the corner of that retaining wall to the next available corner of the retaining wall going down the sidewalk. The monument sign is proposed to be inset in that little notch, not encumbering any further distance into the street from where that notch is currently placed.
But for clarification, you're saying where the blue is the forefront of the sign as it would be viewed at the street? It will actually go out past the abutment right there?
That's the placement of the sign, and if you look at the pro, or the plan view just to the south, you can see the sign is actually at an angle, so it's not a, it's not a complete square. It won't be exactly like that. It'll be kind of less intrusive than that square box.
So we've got a V-shaped sign, so to speak. The other issue I had was in the description language of the report. It stated that the monument sign will encroach seven and a half feet into the required 10-foot setback. Can you clarify that that is only two and a half feet?
It's actually a two and a half feet from the property line. What we talked about in the previous meeting yesterday was incorrect. It's actually a seven and a half foot encroachment into the 10-foot setback, but a two and a half foot measurement from the property line. So the encroachment into the signed setback is seven and a half feet. And as depicted, and we have that little graphic made up for the meeting tonight.
All right. Any other questions for staff regarding this particular item?
Scott, in the packet on the proposed planned development, one through seven, the three and the seven is one of the only modifications, that's correct?
Yes.
Scott, on the sign there, how thick is that?
I'm not aware how thick the sign is. Maybe Gary could shed some light on.
Is that going to block traffic coming in and out there for sight and see?
That's...
Yeah, I couldn't tell.
If you could visualize on the back, there's a sight distance arrow that my staff went out and basically took a line of sight. There's a, for lack of a better word, a retaining wall with a built-up fence that kind of makes a notch there, and that's your point of sight restriction. And what my staff has found is this sign will actually be inset inside that notch, not encompassing any less of a visibility issue than what that retaining wall currently has available to it. In fact, the fact that the sign is actually angled in and doesn't take the entire blue box is further testament to that.
We're going to try to correct your screen, Mr. Allen. I just want to make sure that we're all following the same thing. Thank you, sir. Mr. Allen, are you, is your answer obvious now, sir? All right. Any other questions for staff regarding this particular item? Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this particular item? The applicant wants to speak? Okay, all right.
On your first picture of that, we're not showing the rear elevation on the, from the lakeside. It will show the windows.
I think you need to go forward a frame. That one right there. It's not showing...
That's not the one. There we go. Okay, you see where the six windows are? The windows on the left are windows. The ones on the right was something that was proposed that will not be.
So it'll only have the windows on the left, towards the lakeside?
Yes.
For clarification.
Then that carries back on the other, I believe it's three sections, four sections, three sections.
So in other words, if we look at the, off to the left of that particular forefront view, each one of those will replicate with the windows being towards the lakeside?
But as you go back, yes.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Is that going to be brick or rock up there until you get to the gable?
Yeah, it's all stone.
How about the gable?
No, it's siding.
It's what?
Siding.
That's what's going on there, isn't it?
Yes.
And we have already approved to stay with that siding. He's just coming forward with some modifications for the stucco and the windows and the sign, I believe. Are those the three issues we have? Any other questions for the applicant? Anything else you want to say, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience want to speak on this particular public hearing? We'll close the public hearing. Entertain any kind of a motion that the council wants to bring forward at this time? I'll help you along.
I'll do it.
All right.
I make a motion. We grant the request to amend the existing PD for the property located at 401 East Pearl, including approval and ordinance providing for that amendment and allowing for the modification of the exterior facades and the installation of a new monument sign.
I would ask that you clarify the address as being 401 East Pearl, sir, before we...
401 East Pearl Street.
Thank you. And I need a second on this, please. We have a second from Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this item? All in favor of amending the existing planned development zoning district for property located at 401 East Pearl Street and filing for the file plat? Please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Mayor, for clarification, was that with the modification as mentioned on the three windows to the right-hand side of the elevation? Where it says three new windows on the drawing? Gary altered that at the podium. Did that motion include that alteration as presented by the applicant?
As presented by the applicant. Councilman Parsons, are you okay with amending that to read as amended by the applicant? Regarding the windows? And Councilman Hewlett, are you okay with that amendment? And we'll call for the question one more time. All in favor, as amended by the applicant, to approve the zoning, planned development zoning district? Please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number five. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of the City of Granbury to amend the following sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance. Section 4.1A to modify permitted districts for massage establishments and remove servants' quarters from the use table. Section 7.2E to allow exemptions for directional signs and remove ZBA approval for signs for special events. Section 7.2F.4 to reference and exemption for direction signs. Section 7.31 to exempt directional signs from historic commission review. Section 11.2D to reduce parking requirements for senior apartments. Section 11.5E to remove setback requirements for decks, pools, slabs, and similar improvements inside and rear yards, and Article 12 to amend the definition of consignment store and amend the definition for decorative flag. And consider and approve an ordinance providing for said amendments. We have quite a bit before us here, council members, and it's been a diligent job by the community development to address some of the issues that they have had brought to them, concerns by applicants and the such, in their review of our current usage table. They found that maybe a little clarification. We've had a few issues of massage establishments wanting to set up shop in a different type of a district and having to require them to come before us for an SUP. All of this is in an effort to make it a more streamlined manner of being user-friendly and business-friendly. Entertain a motion by anybody to approve as presented, otherwise we'll go into them one by one.
Mayor, I move we table this the next time.
It's a public hearing right now, sir. We won't be able to postpone it without resubmitting it 14 days, is that correct?
As long as you, in your motion, state when the public hearing is, the next available public hearing, if you want it on the 21st in your motion, then we wouldn't have to republish it.
I would like to move this item to the...
Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
It is the 21st. We have a motion to look at this again, to rehear from this public hearing. Postpone it until February 21st. Need a second to follow up. Mr. Perkel has provided us with that second. Any discussion regarding this table? In fact, it doesn't require any discussion. It goes right to the vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries to postpone this till the February 21st meeting. Up to bat, we've got item number six, a request from Chris Applequist with MV Residential Development on behalf of Granbury Crossings LLC that council consider adopting a resolution providing support for Granbury Crossings LLC to build an affordable housing development in the City of Granbury. This is brought to us because this particular applicant, Granbury Crossings LLC, has placed a packet for consideration at the state level. Scott, can you give us a little background as to how this reached this point before council, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, Council. Both this item and the following one, and more specifically, this item as it's opened, they are requesting state tax credits or state fund support credits in order to build affordable housing in the City of Granbury. In order to do that, what they need to do is go through a competing process at the state level in Austin with their initial proposal. They work on a credit system. One of the things that they get points for in the competing process is just a general resolution of support from the city. And we've had discussions with both applicants stating that since we haven't seen a detailed application yet, we really can't give them somewhat of an investment-backed expectation on any approval, but we can tell them generally that the application of affordable housing is consistent with our general comprehensive plan, but it doesn't obligate the city to any further subsequent approvals until we see a filed application or commit the city to any financial obligation. So back to the comprehensive plan, we do have a good soundbite in our comprehensive plan saying that we would like to support housing types, cross-sections of housing types to support our demographic here in the City of Granbury. There's language in the resolution to that end. It also says that this doesn't bind the city on any subsequent approvals or financial obligations, but we wish them well in the application process, and that's the general crux of it.
Okay, and one thing I would like to point out for the council members, in your packet, the resolution that is included in item number six is not the same as the one that's in item number seven. But I have spoke with the city attorney, and he states that the language that's in item number seven's resolution will replicate the resolution that is going to go to the city, I mean, to this particular applicant request, Chris Applequist. The difference in those two items is that we add some language into section four regarding there is no financial obligation on behalf of the city. Is that correct, sir? All right. They will read exactly the same in both items. I just wanted to point that out before we approve the resolution that's included. I understand that the resolution will be modified to reflect that there is no financial obligation on behalf of the city.
Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution as it's been brought forward by staff with the amendment to not, with the amendment to include the financial language that you quoted.
All right, we have a motion. Need a second. We have a second by Mr. Hewlett.
Do we know what the median income is?
I'm not aware of what that median income is that they're catering to with this particular project. It was just mentioned that...
Are they both 60% of median?
I'm sorry, I don't know those particular specifics. The applicant has just placed this before us very vaguely in their process of trying to bid for state funding.
Do we know what the vacancy rate is in apartment houses in the area?
No, sir.
In talking with these applicants, I know that the application process does require them to actually cater to possibly a certain population within the City of Granbury, and I believe, as Mayor Proten mentioned, it was the 60% threshold that they cater to. Beyond that, we don't have specifics on this.
And am I correct, Scott, that this is, this is a program that's allowed by the state that gives people the opportunity on a home that otherwise couldn't on a home usually?
Well, it's, this is...
The apartments or is this...
This will be more multi-family type development.
And it is government financing. Tax dollar financing.
Is, Scott, what does it cost the city? I know you said the state, but we get the state on two. What's it going to cost there?
I'm not aware that it's costing us anything.
Do we get impact fees on this, Scott? Yes or no? We get impact fees?
Well, it's expected that we'll get all the development review fees and the impact fees as we would any other development.
Any other development, we're going to get the money. We're going to make the money out of it.
They have not approached me for any kind of request for any fee lines.
And taxes has to be paid on this property. It'll be property tax. It'll increase, the building will be worth the value of their appraisals, and we'll get more, like we do almost everything else. Yeah, we can back out any time.
We have nothing but a resolution before us, gentlemen.
We've done this before. We can back out if we actually see the plan we don't like.
This is not a throwing out there that we're going to allow this to happen without proper review. This is simply and merely a resolution that the applicant is hoping will help them secure those state funds to produce affordable housing here in Granbury. It's not a guaranteed. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other questions regarding this particular item? This time, I'll entertain a vote on this. We have a motion to approve the resolution with the additional language regarding financial responsibility on behalf of the city. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. We have one nay. Please show for the record that was Mr. Parsons. The second was Mr. Hewlett. The second was Mr. Hewlett, I believe it was. Is that correct, Mr. Hewlett? And the motion carries. Moving on to item number seven. Much like the aforementioned item number six, this is a request of Scott B. Poor of Megan Advisors LLC on behalf of Granbury Woods Apartment LP that council consider adopting a resolution providing support for Granbury Woods Apartments to build an affordable housing development in the city of Granbury. Now, this one is located in a different part of our community. Scott, can you give me an update as to where this one is located? It's on Highway 4, I believe, is that correct?
Correct, Mayor. This is just north, northwest of the intersection of Thorpe Springs and Highway 4, where it makes that angled intersection. It would be immediately to the left or on the west side of the right-of-way.
And pretty much the same holds true for this. We have before us a request in writing to take this action, and we have a resolution before us to vote on. And this particular item does include the language that I mentioned before. If you go to item, section four, the applicant, city council, the city of Granbury agree that the city supporting the application by resolution is the first step in the process and that this resolution of support by the city does not waive full discretionary review authority over any ensuing application submitted to the city by the applicant, nor does the resolution commit the city to any financial obligation. So this one actually does contain that additional language we were referring to in item number six. Entertain a motion to accept the resolution and adopt the resolution as presented.
I'll move.
Have a motion by Mr. Tyra, need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Any further discussion regarding this particular item?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Scott a couple of questions.
All right, Mr. Allen, go ahead and proceed.
I should answer on the first one. Do you know how many single-family homes it was on the first?
I believe both applications generally came forward with general discussing, discussions about 80 dwelling units on each development site.
We're not approving nothing, like you said, Mayor, we're just.
We're just allowing them, courtesy of us adopting a resolution in their pursuit for state funding for the project. Any other questions for staff? All in favor of adopting this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note for the record, there is one nay, Mr. Parsons. Motion carries. Brings us to item number eight. Consider and adopt a resolution of the city of Granbury suspending the effective date for 90 days in connection with the rate increase filing of Atmos Energy Corporation on or about January 31st, 2012, requiring the reimbursement of municipal rate case expenses, authorizing participation in related rate proceedings, and authorizing the retention of special counsel. Counsel, I'll remind you that prior to this coming to us, we were part of a group of litigants that were represented by this particular Jim Broyle attorney as far as the Atmos Texas municipalities rate case. And this is an attempt by that attorney representing us, inclusive of other municipalities, that will basically stall this for a period of 90 days if approved by us. Any questions regarding this of our counselor?
Why?
Why?
Yeah, what?
That's a good question.
Essentially, what happened is Atmos filed right before Christmas the, an application to increase the, their cost of providing natural gas services to the people of not only Granbury, but multiple, multiple cities all across Texas. I think the tune of nearly 12 million dollars. And so, because Granbury is a part of the coalition of cities called the Atmos Texas municipalities, and because the Granbury does maintain, as does every other city, the ultimate authority over the rates set by the gas companies, the coalition's attorney down in Austin has asked every single city as part of that coalition to pass this resolution, which gives him more time to negotiate with Atmos to try to resolve this rate increase. And so that's what this resolution does. It basically suspends their application for 90 days to allow him more time. And you've seen in your packets the information from him, and I will submit to the council that this has been submitted to every other city, and it's well over 20 or 30 cities.
Do we have any evidence that shows in the past when we've deferred these and paid council more money to go after that, is it effectively affected rates or not?
I believe it has in the past, and I will submit to you, council, that you're, you are not paying this attorney any money at all. What he does is his expenses under the statute are charged to Atmos, and Atmos pays him.
Oh, so it comes back to us in rate?
In this rate increase. It just hits us 90 days earlier if we don't fight it.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve the resolution that's before us, need a second. We have a second by Mr. Perkel. In discussion, I'd just like to mention that, like Mr. Parsons asking if we see any benefit in the past regarding this particular resolution, this does not guarantee that Atmos's effort to increase the rates is going to be pushed off for 90 days so that council down there has an opportunity to delay it, refine it, or restate it. Any other questions regarding this or discussion on this item? We have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution that's before us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. It was seconded by Mr. Perkel. Motion carries. Brings us down to item number nine. Consider appointments to fill one vacancy on airport, one vacancy on building standards, one vacancy on P&amp;Z, one vacancy on zoning board of adjustment. What we have been presented with this time is a vetted applicant list. You'll see it in blue in your packets. The vetted applicant list of 2012. I would like it, it has come to my attention that one of the applicants that's been reviewed in the item number two, the airport board, BJ Woods, it has come to my attention that this particular individual, although he has served on the airport board in the past, he only attended one meeting, and his attendance actually resulted in, lack of attendance, I should say, resulted in him basically stepping down from that board, and he was immediately replaced by other members. And I do want to point out that for the airport board, I think we've got almost a $17 million project on the table. And irregardless of what you think about this project, it's going to be a big stimulus thing for us, and it's something that we need to be forward-thinking on. Timothy Rothenbush, who is the other applicant, he has been in attendance. He currently still sits on the board until he has been replaced. And I think this particular individual will serve us well to continue. He has, he has shown the effort by attending all meetings except one. I've been made privy to a list of 2011 meeting attendance by the city department that oversees this out in that. I'm sorry, it's eluding me as to what that division is, but city services, thank you much.
So, Mayor, is there just one vacancy? And Tim holds the vacancy right now?
Tim is currently sitting there, and I would recommend that we might want to consider keeping him on staff as he has proved worthy board member throughout the 2011 tenure that he's been there.
And we don't have any other candidate?
No others that qualify according to the department. Remember, we wanted to have our applicants vetted by the departments by which they are basically affecting and answer to and respond to. So with that, I'd entertain any kind of a motion to, we'll do these one at a time. We've got Timothy Rothenbush as an applicant for the airport board. Need a motion to.
First of all, are you saying that, are you saying that the other one, Billy, is not an applicant now?
We had asked that department vet these, and it has come to my attention that they finally got back with me about when they reviewed. And it was, I gotta admit, it was after the fact that we got the packets out. But that has been brought to my attention. And if you want to see a list of current member attendance record, we can wait, put this off for a while, but.
No, no, Mayor, what I'm asking though is, it sounds like, it sounds like Billy stepped down. Am I, did I get this correct?
Previously.
Previously, because, probably because he couldn't attend the meetings.
That, that may be.
Now he's coming back wanting to be on it, and.
And that may be the case. I just want to make. He is, he is a pilot. He has an interest in the airport. But I just wanted to point out that the department over which is basically advised by this airport board has brought to our attention that this particular applicant in the past, and I must say it's in the past, was not a regular attendee to the board meetings. And as a result, a lot of the board meetings at that time failed to have a forum.
And that was many years ago?
I'm sorry, I don't have the specific dates. They did not provide me with that. They just gave me a report.
I talked to the chairman of the airport board. I apologize, I don't remember his name.
I believe that's Jackie Vaughn for the record.
That's right. And he was saying that Martin Bush was really a good member. Talked to Nathan a little bit about him. And he's got an airplane out there. Said he's real active, is what the chairman said. And he didn't say anything about the other guy, but he did highly recommend him.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Like I say, I would entertain a motion to place somebody onto the board.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to place Timothy Rothenbush.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett to place Timothy Rothenbush on the airport board. We have a second by Mr. Allen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Bringing us down to building standards plumbing and appeals, or adjustments and appeals board, there has been one vacancy sitting out there ever since Mr. Perkel was disqualified as sitting on that board as the insurance agent. He used to serve before he became a council member.
Mayor, this looks easy, you only got one person.
We have one person before us who is actually an insurance agent.
I move then we appoint David Zunker to the building standard plumbing, DJ, appeals as the vacancy for the insurance agent.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tyra to place David Zunker on the building standards board. Need a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Parsons. Any further discussion regarding this? I think it's a no-brainer, but we'll proceed with the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Bringing us down to planning and zoning. There is one vacancy. Before us, we have four applicants, some of which were previous applicants and board members. And I do want to point that out. I'm sorry, I don't know specifically who was on planning and zoning, but these are the four members that we have before us. Entertain a motion to narrow it down to one person to fill one vacancy.
Mayor, I'll nominate Walter Harden. A lot of y'all might know his dad worked here for years. And Walter's a real estate guy, house builder. Personally, I'll do him. I think everybody on the council knows him. He would be a good board member for the planning and zoning.
Any other nominees? We have a nominee of Walter Harden. Do I have a second? We have a second from Mr. Hewlett. All in favor of appointing Walter Harden to the planning and zoning board? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Bringing us down to zoning board of adjustment, also known as ZBA. We have one vacancy there. It is an alternate position, it's not a full-time position. We have, again, four applicants that have applied for that. And I would entertain any kind of a nomination by the council for any of those members, please, to fill that vacancy. Anybody?
Mayor?
I do know that we had a lot of comment about Tom DeCisio and whether or not he qualified on a previous board appointment. He did have some interest in serving, and he does qualify for the zoning board of adjustment.
He's the one we took off the other day?
That is correct. He did not qualify for P&amp;Z due to the fact that he did not have 12-month residency. Entertain any kind of nominations at this point, please.
I think, yeah, well, then I move that we appoint Tom DeCisio. I thought Mr. Allen already did, you just need a second.
Did I just step on your toes by talking about him?
No, I was gonna say that, but I just think, I don't know the guy. I could do Walter, never met this guy, but his resume was really, really good. I will make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to nominate Tom DeCisio. And I could be butchering the name. We have a second by Mr. Tyra. Any other nominations, please, for ZBA? We'll close the nominations. All in favor of appointing Tom DeCisio as a member of the zoning board of adjustment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. There being no further business that I can find before us, this meeting is adjourned.